I'd like to call this council meeting to order. This evening, we have Hannah Tipping with us, and Hannah is going to sing our national anthem. She is with King's School of Vocal. I invite everyone to stand if you are able.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true North strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glory us and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you very much, Hannah. I'll note that I've been informed by the Clerk's office that live streaming is down right now. It's being recorded, but it is not being livestreamed. Apparently, our carrier is having some difficulties with their website. Just for your information. It's been moved by Councilor Fernandez at the minutes of the regular meeting held February the 10th, 2014, and special meetings held February 10th and 24th, as mail to the mayor and councillors be accepted. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. We have one letter of communication, and unless otherwise, I will refer that communication as listed on the agenda. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. We have one presentation, of course. Oh, pecuniary interests, yes, I'm sorry. Item three on the agenda. Any declarations of pecuniary interests? Counselor Singh.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this is to do with the D.C. exemption for the boundary due to my parents owning real estate in the downtown area. I would declare conflict of interest.
So noted. Counselor Ionitis.
Through you, Mayor. I'd like to declare my pecuniary interests on Finance Corporate Services Committee, item number four, and on for the Planning and Strategic Initiative Committee, item number two, as they both relate to property, family-only property.
All right. On item number four, Counselor Rumanovich.
No, I clicked in to ask questions and so on.
All right. I'm going to take you out, and you can put yourself back in. So, we are going to our first presentation, and that's Theron Kramer on behalf of Compass Kitchener. Welcome, Theron. And team.
Thank you very much. I'm Mayor Zera and members of council. Good evening and thanks for giving us the time for this presentation from the Voter Turnout Subcommittee of Compass Kitchener. In 2010, there were 139,271 eligible electors in the municipal election. There were 36,346 ballots cast. The percentage turnout was anywhere from 20.4% to 29.1% over the 10 wards. The question is, can we do better? We think that we can, but nothing that we are proposing here tonight is a short-term fix. Let me just tell you a bit about what we have been doing over the last year and a half. Our Phase One initial research gave us basic information about why people do not vote, why, at least in the short-term, internet voting would not have a huge impact on voter turnout relative to the cost, and some idea of what other communities are doing to encourage voter turnout. However, we were not satisfied with the research that we had, and so we moved into Phase Two by engaging a PhD candidate from the Graduate School of Social Work to assist us. He produced, with hours of input from Subcommittee members, an excellent report, a summary of which you have attached as a PowerPoint to our report to you. Based on that report, Compass Kitchener agreed that we would carry on with our activities in this area. So what we have been doing more recently, we have met with a very positive response from umbrella organizations related to youth, seniors, and newcomer groups in our request that they partner with us to reach out to their constituents around the October 2014 election. All of them so far have responded enthusiastically. They all recognize that, in fact, we can do better in getting people out to vote. Both the Clerk's office and the Communications Department of the city have been helpful in identifying what they have done in the past and what they are doing this year in order to reduce barriers to voting and to reach out more effectively to the broad general population. We strongly believe that the municipality has a responsibility not to promote individual candidates, but to ensure that potential voters have easy access to information about all of the candidates. And we will talk more about that in a moment. What we're going to be doing in the short term, we will continue those outreach efforts that we've talked about with specific target populations. And in the longer term, we're going to be further exploring other models for encouraging ongoing citizen participation in municipal affairs. Because the one thing that we learned from the research was really clear, that people that are engaged in the municipality in decision-making vote. And one of the ways to ensure that we have greater voter turnout is to get people engaged between elections. At some point, we will be bringing recommendations to the next council for a made-in-Kitchener model for increasing that citizen engagement. So, what are we asking from council? We are asking that you accept this report as an update on the Compass Kitchener work plan, and if you do, we will incorporate future steps into a new Compass Kitchener work plan for the next two years. We are asking that you encourage the city clerk to review their decision not to include other than basic candidate information on the city's website. And I just want to talk about that for a moment. We've met with the clerk and her staff and understand that they have concerns about putting more than just name, telephone, and email addresses for candidates on Kitchener's website. We understand that advice from the city's legal department is that putting more information would contravene the Municipal Elections Act. With all due respect, that is an interpretation that we do not agree with. And that's because we've looked at a number of other, and sorry, these are very small. You're not going to see them terribly well. We've looked at another number of other municipalities, and we've got a couple of examples here: St. Catherine's, Mississauga, Whitby. Each of those has information on their websites that includes, at least, a connection to the website for the individual candidates. In the case of St. Catherine's, last year at least, they actually put a bio on each candidate on their website. If you could actually read these slides, you would see that not every candidate has a website, but they are all given the same opportunity to give that information through consent forms that they submit to the city. St. Catherine's, as I said, has, in the last election, even put candidate bios on their website. Across the country, there are many more municipalities that offer that equal service to all candidates and, more importantly, to the public to access information about who they are going to be voting for. We are also asking that this council ask the province, as Toronto has done, to amend the Municipal Elections Act to allow both Canadian citizens and permanent residents the right to vote in municipal elections. There are two primary reasons for making this request. One, it's a matter of fairness and is seen as a matter of fairness by permanent residents who work, raise their families, start businesses, and, of course, pay the same property taxes that the rest of us do. Secondly, as we reach out to the immigrant community, which is one of the target groups that we've identified, we want to ensure them that, yes, this municipality is interested in ensuring their voice is heard here. Landed immigrants are permanent residents in all aspects, except that they cannot vote at the municipal, provincial, or federal level. They are also excluded, of course, then, from running as candidates in those elections. But in all other aspects, they have the same rights as Canadian citizens. We realize that allowing landed immigrants to vote is not going to necessarily change the percentage of eligible voters that will go to the polls, although, from what I know about people who have chosen to live here as opposed to being born here, they often embrace our democratic processes with more fervor than many born Canadians. But at a time of growing democratic deficit that we see in this country, is it not a positive thing that more people who want to vote, have the right to vote, be given that opportunity? Compass Kitchener believes that we can do better in increasing citizen participation in the municipal voting process. We recognize that reducing the democratic deficit is a long-term process and that what we are doing may not have a huge effect in 2014. We are willing to continue to work at that very worthwhile, long-term goal, along with council and other community partners. Our final request to you is that you indicate your support for us to carry on in this work. If I have just a moment yet, I wanted to make one other point around landed immigrants being able to vote. In 40 countries around the world now, landed immigrants are able to vote in municipal elections, not saying federally, not state or provincially, but in 40 countries: in Germany, in Sweden, in Ireland, in many other countries, they are allowed to vote at the municipal level. We're hoping that, again, you're not going to be able to give permission for them to vote, you're simply going to be able to ask the province to amend the Municipal Elections Act. I was on CBC Radio this morning talking about this, and right after the program, one of the staff was telling me that Facebook and Twitter were full of responses because, of course, they focused on the immigrant voting issue. And I could just read you a couple of them. This one says, "I know some engaged and informed permanent residents whose voices are limited by being barred from the ballot box. Kitcher would be a better place if they could fully participate in our democracy." Another one says, "As a former permanent resident, I would have loved the opportunity to vote. Now that I'm a citizen, I exercise my vote each election." Another one says, "As a permanent resident who has made KW my home, I would love to be able to vote." And finally, on the other subject about access to information, Lori writes, "I'd love to see the municipality host a website that every candidate can choose to fill out with their name, contact information, and a long-form area for position statement. It was nearly impossible in 2010 to find information about ward and school trustee candidates. Not knowing your choices is a real deterrent to voting." Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you very much for the presentation, Theron, and thank you to you and your committee for the lengthy amount of work it went into preparing for the report. Appreciate the research that you did. There are several questions, and then we'll get into comments. Questions only right now of Theron. Counselor Rumanovich.
Thank you very much, and Theron, thanks a lot for clearly a very well-thought-out and report that involved a lot of work. Just in terms of the work that has been done, has it largely been done through members of the committee, or has there been any sort of public consultation around parts of it?
The work that's been done has been largely done by the Subcommittee of Compass Kitchener. We have, as I mentioned, recently got into meeting with umbrella organizations about the possibility of them reaching out to their constituents. I've had an excellent meeting with the KW Multicultural Centre, for example, and the Immigration Partnership. They both agreed that they will work with us in reaching out to their communities. We've met with MAX, and they are looking at the possibility of their doing something in this election, around the election. We've met with Kayak, and while they were enthusiastic at first, my understanding is they've lost a few members recently. We're hoping we might get them back in the fall, but we will be talking to other groups that they're involved with youth. Again, we wanted to target specific populations to make it easier to do that outreach rather than just a shotgun approach to the general population, although we do think that some of the things that the Clerk's office and the communications are doing to reach the general population are very important.
Okay, thank you. My second question is specifically on the issue of the permanent residents voting. And obviously, you know, I know that in the community, there's probably different viewpoints on it around, you know, rights of permanent residents versus rights of citizens, and where should that line be? Because it's obviously a fundamental kind of question, would the committee, do you think your committee would be averse to having some degree of further public consultation, particularly on the issue of permanent residents voting?
We could certainly do that. I think when Toronto made their proposal, which is basically what we've asked for here, except that their proposal has a number of other factors in it which you probably would not want to support, but when they made their proposal, the province has responded and said that they would look at that issue. I suspect that they're going to have to have public consultations around that if they decide to go in that direction. But if you think it would be helpful for council to make a decision about whether or not they want to support that, I wouldn't have any problem asking those kinds of questions in our community.
Great, thank you. And it certainly is something that I think merits looking at, particularly someone who comes from an immigrant family. I guess the last question I have has to do-
Give me 45 seconds.
Okay. The last question I have has to do with respect to the issue about the websites. And have staff explained to you what, if any, authority council has around giving direction on that as opposed to what the city clerk's authority in this regard?
I'm not sure we've heard a differentiation between your authority and their authority, no.
Well, Mr. Mayor, at the appropriate time, I would, number one, I'd like to ask that question of staff, and number two, I'm also prepared to move a motion when that time comes.
All right. If you could click back in then. Counselor Ionitis.
Through you, Mayor. Thank you, Theron, for coming in today and with your presentation today. The one question that I kind of have, would like to address with you, is concerning engaging with youth. And I know with myself, I've been actively engaging with youth in my ward in particular, but I know, as well as the municipality, is working on youth forum, which is Compass Kitchener and Kitchener Rotary Centre is working on. And I just want you to give a little bit of a comment about that and what more we can do to engage youth.
Yes, the youth forums, I think they've been tremendous. I've attended most of them, and I really commend council and the mayor for giving the amount of time that they've given to those forums. I think they're very important. I think they need to continue. There's lots more students out there. I think the reason that we focused on Grade 10 was because, of course, that's where the curriculum lies around. But those students have got a couple of years yet, of course, before they vote. We've actually had a suggestion come to us recently that, in fact, when I met with Kayak, it was their suggestion that we ought to be doing something with Grade 12 students because it's at the Grade 12 level that they're reaching that age where they can vote. So that's something that I think we need to look at. Also, of course, as you know, there's a huge student population in these communities. I would suspect that as far as Kitchener's interests lie, it's with Conesthor College, and we've actually tried to talk to them and will continue to do that around possibly having something happen around Conesthor College before the next election soon.
Okay, so that's great. One other question that I wanted to touch upon, and similar to that, is do you think we could probably actively engage the school boards further in creating better environment for the students to pick up on these issues locally?
Yes, I think we could, I think we should. I'm also aware that school boards are often up to their eyeballs with people coming from outside wanting them to do more. I don't know how much more they would do. I mean, the youth forum has been really great, and they've been extremely cooperative because it fits with the curriculum. So we may have to find other ways to make, in order to make that happen.
Thanks, Theron. Keep up the good work.
Counselor Glenn Graham.
Thanks very much. Theron, your group was really instrumental, I think, in helping us understand the connection between citizen engagement and the voting turnout. And the democratic deficit is something that is a grave concern and has been something that's a trend over the last couple of decades. In terms of specific recommendations, I wonder if your group will dive any deeper into getting into any prescriptions about things that our communities might do or neighborhoods? It talks at a high level about some of the things that we could do as encouraging people to participate. Will your group be looking at any more specifics, or would you leave that to council or to staff?
In terms, we see our work in two streams. The one stream is to see what we can do for this election in 2014. The other stream is to look at the longer term and the engagement. And one of the things that we're doing and will continue to do is look at models in other municipalities. There are some really, I mean, we've already done some initial work in that area. There's some really great interactive websites, for instance, that some cities have undertaken to get citizens engaged on a day-to-day basis, on an ongoing basis. And we want to look at some of those things and see if there's a model that might fit here.
Great. Sounds like you're just getting started. And the last question is related to permanent residents and landed immigrants. You talked about the ability to run for office as well. Would you draw the line at that? Because you want to encourage voting, but would you draw the line at them running for office, or is that something you're thinking of as well?
My understanding is that if they were given the right to vote, that they would have the right to run as candidates. That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you very much.
So that if the act was changed to give them the right to vote, that they would be able to then run as candidates.
Excellent, thank you.
Counselor Etherington.
Yeah, Theron, first of all, many thanks for this. It's an excellent, thorough, and very thought-provoking report. So thank you very much. I wanted to ask some quick questions. You mentioned St. Catherine's, Mississauga, and a number of other municipalities that are doing this biographical release of information about candidates. Do you know roughly how many are successfully doing that?
We didn't do a count. And I just want to clarify that St. Catherine's is really the only one in Ontario that we saw that was actually putting bios on. We think one of the key things is to have that website connection for those candidates that develop a website. And when we're told that we can't do that because some have websites and some don't, when you look at almost any municipality, there are some candidates that don't have email addresses either, but that doesn't stop us from putting email addresses on the website. So, yeah, I'm just not sure that taking that small step is really that huge.
Okay, and I appreciate that. You, as well as counsel, are obviously in conflict with advice we're receiving. That's difficult to deal with. I wanted to ask you about the amount of money that we spend on elections. I think I mentioned a while back that we spend more on animal control than we do on elections. I guess it's a no-brainer, but you would want us to spend more money on elections? Is that correct?
Well, for example, if landed immigrants were allowed to vote, there would be more eligible voters. There may be increases in costs around, perhaps you'd have to have more polling stations, perhaps you'd have to have more materials, that kind of thing. Toronto actually did a cost analysis of this and came up with $3.69 per voter that it would cost to have landed immigrants added to the rolls. So, yes, there would be some cost involved, but again, either we're committed to increasing the democratic participation, that doesn't seem like a huge cost.
Precisely. My last question, I'm sorry, I'm a reporter, second from last question. The other thing that doesn't fit with our information, or it seems to go a separate route, is the whole issue of people voting online. I wanted to ask you specifically in your report about Huntsville, they seem to have achieved some success, and 33 other municipalities where they did increase voter turnout. And can you expand on that a little?
My understanding, the research shows that it's been fairly minimal. It may have increased a percentage point or two, but it's really hard to tell whether that's what increases it or not. The research shows that most of the people that vote online would have voted anyway. The fact is that in the long term, I think that we're, and again, it's not just me saying this, our committee members have looked at this and our researcher has looked at this, in the long term, we're going to lose more voters if we don't eventually get online because, as the younger generation is coming up, they are more and more likely to use that technology to vote if they have that opportunity, so.
Thank you. And my last question, in Guelph, you mentioned in the report, it's part of the participatory budgeting section, but there seems, can you tell me what the turnout is in Guelph after there, so it's 11 neighborhood groups were allocated a quarter of a million dollars by the city? Was there a noticeable increase in Guelph, do you know?
I have no idea, sorry. Didn't look at that, but it's a good question.
Thank you very much.
Good question.
Thank you.
Counselor Fernandez.
Thank you. I don't know that I can ask any more questions since you've already been asked, but there's a couple. On one of the pages, it says, "To improve the City of Kitchener's voter turnout in 2014 municipal election by blank percentage points." Under what was our goal? Did you have a, oh, you're, no, you're shaking your head? There was no hope or dream that your group was hoping that we could do 40% or?
There was a suggestion that we should try to set that kind of goal. Frankly, there's a lot of variables. I mean, we're going to have a mayoral contest this time, right? Is that going to make a difference? So, yeah, we're really hesitant to set a goal, what kind of, what percentage increase we might have. Even if we set it and we achieved it, we still wouldn't know whether it was because of our outreach or whether it was because of other factors, so, yeah.
And that was actually, my next question was, were you able to see if having a referendum on a particular hot-button issue, similar to the fluoridation issue in Waterloo the last time, if- last time, if that is something that draws more voters out? And is that an opportunity that we should be taking?
It's not something we've looked at in depth, but we have seen, again, in the research, that it depends on what the referendum issue is. Just having a referendum issue on the ballot does not necessarily mean that you're going to have huge numbers turn out to vote. But if it's something that's quite controversial, if it's something that people are interested in, then I think there are examples where it has increased the turnout because of that.
And I agree with you with regards to your comments and suggestions that maybe we should be targeting, you know, the grade 12s. I think our youth forum has been outstanding in bringing the education component to our 15-year-old, grade 10s and 16-year-olds, I think. But unfortunately, a lot of them have three years in which to forget it. And that makes it difficult. You mentioned something about Conestoga College and being the ward councillor that has Conestoga College in my ward, what was your comments regarding that? And is there some way that either the ward councillor can help or?
Maybe. And we have talked to, we have talked to the executive of the Student Party at Conestoga. They were not very enthusiastic about getting involved. I think one of the things is, and we heard this clearly from Kayak when we met with them, one of the reasons that youth don't vote in municipal elections is, as Kayak said clearly to us, nobody's discussing our issues. And so, you know, I think, I think there are issues that students like housing, like the cost of transportation, et cetera, that may stimulate their involvement. Again, I think any involvement, any involvement there is going to have to be very short and sweet because it's going to have to almost, you can plan it now, but it's going to have to almost run September, October, right, when students come back, rather than now when you're reaching students that may not be there in the coming years.
You're right. And the other problem that I saw was, because I was there twice before the election, engaging with students, just, you know, talking to them, is that many of them don't even know that they can vote in the community that they're presently living in. They think they can only, so that's an education piece that, you know, not only Compass Kitchener could do, but, you know, myself as a councillor in that ward would appreciate doing. I think that that's very important for us to get that message out to students one way or another. That was a comment. That wasn't a question. Sorry.
Well, can I answer the question you didn't ask?
Yes, sure.
It's just in terms of that education piece, we see that as being really important. I think when we're reaching out to specific groups, it's not just to go out and preach, it's your duty to vote. People need to understand, when you look at, for instance, some of the immigrant communities, they may not be aware of how this double system that we have municipally works, what a ballot is going to look like. We see that outreach, and I didn't mention this in my notes, but we see that outreach as including a very strong educational component.
If I, okay. Cue in afterwards if my questions are.
Councillor Singh.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Darren, for the report. And there's some really key suggestions in here that we should be giving some serious thought to. Just want to get your perspective and on some of the things that came out of this report in my mind. One thing that really jumped out was, obviously, we've talked so far about engaging the youth as that being the most important demographic, that you can capture them early on enough. Not only does that help with engagement, but also, you know, later on, they participate with their democratic process as well. So, creating an app, you gave reference to City of Vancouver doing something like that. It didn't provide, was there a big uptake? Did it increase voter turnout once that app came out? Can you give more specifics to that app or?
Can't, sorry. The larger report is available, and it's available, actually, on the website associated with Compass Kitchener. We just put her on the other day. So, you could take a look at that. But if you want me to follow up and find out, I will do that.
I think it'd be helpful. And of course, you know, we have a thriving tech community here that we can, you know, put that challenge to them, perhaps creating something towards that. And the other is, of course, you know, we're talking about the democratic deficit and the importance of increasing voter turnout. But it's also about ensuring that it's informed voters as well, that they know the issues. Do you think some of the lack of voting, the interest in voting, in a municipal election at least, tends to be that the residents aren't aware the quality of life impact that the city hall really has? Whereas the province and the federal government, you know, they get a high profile on a day-to-day basis where the municipal government doesn't. And they really don't know how much of an impact on a day-to-day that the city hall can really have on their lives. And is that what we really need to focus on as well, informing the public?
Yes. I mean, the short answer to that is absolutely. I think that there, with a lot of people, and not necessarily in any of the specified target groups that we've looked at, but generally in the population, a lot of people do not understand the impact of a municipality on their day-to-day lives. They don't think about the sidewalk they walk on or the lights that are, you know, that are lighting their way at night in the downtown or whatever. So certainly the education piece that I was talking about, that has to be part of it. That is, letting people know just what it is, that the various levels of the municipality, in fact, do for citizens every day.
Okay. One thing, you know, my personality, I don't like to spend a lot at home. I don't like to spend much here at City Hall, just the way my personality is. But when it comes to something like this, as important as it is, the budget that we set aside for election day, do you think City Hall does enough? Do you think we set up enough of a priority as an outreach? Or do you think there are some other things that can be done? Do you think that the budget is appropriate to what we should be doing?
I guess I'm not, I guess I don't feel comfortable answering whether or not the budget's appropriate.
The reason why I asked is, I wasn't sure if part of the larger report, you guys had looked at other municipalities, maybe I should ask that way. Was a comparison done relating Kitchener, similar demographics, or similar population group to other cities and as to how much they might be spending towards their election?
No, it wasn't. But that is, again, something that we can certainly take a look at as we're looking at that, both the longer-term and the short-term strategies that we have in place. I think we can always do more to get the word out there. I think sometimes we get stuck in the things that we've always done and we keep doing them. And I think we do need to look at what can we do differently? How can we reach out? And that's one of the reasons, again, why we decided to target certain populations that we're able to identify and reach out specifically with other partners in the community. That's another way to reach out. And the question is, well, what about the broader community? But they are part of the broader community. We are reaching out to the broader community by reaching out to them, I think.
Okay. Thank you so much. And, you know, I welcome the challenge and the, you know, what the committee or, you know, your group has put forward of the city hall of looking at, you know, voters that are immigrants, you know, they do pay property taxes and should they be included into the democratic process. So I think that's something that needs to have some further dialogue. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councillor Gallois-Cilah.
Yeah, I support and congratulate your subcommittee for doing this work. I know we tried to have a committee from a council and a citizen perspective in the past and it didn't really get us anywhere. So it's encouraging to see you guys do this. My question, because there's been a lot of questions already asked, it's more of an opinion question for you. And basically, do you think that the low turnout for voters is partly due to the complexity of municipal elections? For example, you know, when you go to a provincial or a federal election, you vote for one person, whereas a municipal election, you can vote for many different people because of the different positions. Do you feel like that might be some of the reason why we have lower voter turnout?
Well, again, the short answer is absolutely yes. I do think that it is confusing for people. However, there are numerous reasons why people don't vote. When we've been looking at this, I mean, we've had people tell us they don't vote because they're happy with the way things are. Why should they come out and vote? You know, nothing needs to change. Everything's fine. Other people have said it's just too confusing. Other people have said they don't, they don't think anybody's listening to them, et cetera, et cetera. There's just tons of reasons or excuses about why people don't come out and vote. But certainly that's one of them. And we are at a bit of a disadvantage in this community with the two-tier, with the two-tier government. There's no getting away from it. It does make it more complicated for people.
And so do you think with that, we've talked a little bit about education to voters, do you think that that's also a piece that we can, we can work on is the education around who you can vote for and that kind of context?
Absolutely. And I know we do have a, we do have a Civics 101 piece that is available to people and that is used in schools and that kind of thing. And I think that tries to do that. It tries to differentiate between the different levels of government and talk about what the different levels do. But again, it's, yeah, it also needs us to work together with the region when we're doing this kind of outreach as well. So that, because we're not just talking about, I mean, if we're going to talk about students, for example, they live all over the region. They don't just live in Kitchener. So if you're targeting youth, you have to assume that you're going to be, you're going to be running into youth that, you know, that vote in Waterloo or in townships or whatever as well. So, yeah, you've got to think the broader region, I think, as part of this.
Okay. Thank you very much, Darren.
I have one question, Darren. On the definition of permanent resident, you referenced landed immigrant.
Yes.
And are there any qualifications on that? And in terms of the, like, the time that someone has to be registered as a landed immigrant, how do you approve actual residency? Because if they're landed immigrants, they may be here for shorter periods of time. Some are here for decades without becoming Canadian citizens. Have you talked about the definition?
Yes. Anyone who comes here as a landed immigrant, has that status, is a permanent resident. The only way they could be deported is if they committed a serious crime like treason. That is the only way. And that's the only difference between their rights under the Charter of Rights and Freedoms federally and a citizen's rights under the Charter, plus the fact that they can't, that they can't vote. Landed immigrants need to be here for three years before they can apply for citizenship. I can tell you that right now, my understanding is that it can take up to five years. Like, they apply after the third year. It can take up to another two years for that application, actually, for them to achieve their citizenship. So they can be here, as I said earlier, contributing to the community for five years before they would actually be able to vote. In, I don't know, maybe that's enough to answer your question, is that?
That's fine. That's helpful. Thank you. Councillor Fernandez, one more question?
Yes. Just maybe more of a clarification. Under, do you have the deck of the report? Under ethno-cultural groups and new Canadians?
Yes.
The last sentence talks about as their integration within the, and I'm not going to, I'm sure going to mess up this word, but polity is relatively superficial. Is that a typo? But I, maybe I can understand what that is.
It's an academic word for being involved in the politics of the.
Oh, okay. I got you. All right. So now that I understand that, my question is a bit more relative to that. What I'm understanding you're saying is that newcomers and new Canadians don't see the connection and the integration between being a part of the community and being able to vote? Is that, or is that incorrect understanding?
Yeah, I don't think, no, the, I don't think that's what the research actually says, that they don't see a connection. For some, they probably don't. But for many, they see the connection, but they have a sense of not belonging, in part because they don't have that right to vote. So that they do feel excluded. Again, as some of these emails today were saying after the CBC show, you know, "We're contributing the same as our neighbor who happens to have citizenship, and yet we're excluded." That diminishes their sense of belonging, I think. And I think the research that's been done shows that.
And I agree. I have a friend who's been here for over 30 years and she's finally become a Canadian. But one of the things that really pushed her was that she was tired of not being able to vote. So I really agree. I think that we really need to do, to make that change. That's a substantial change. Thanks again. I didn't thank you, but thanks again for all the work that this is way above what I think that a volunteer committee should be doing. But you guys continue to surpass everything that we would ever expect, I think, from a committee. Kudos to all of you for that.
Well, I've said it before. I'll say it again. We've got the greatest group of volunteers that I've ever worked with in my very long life. So, thank you.
Okay. Those are all the questions, Darren. Thank you. Councillor Babbage, motion?
Well, I can ask the questions of staff first, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
And I have two questions of staff, but one of them, I think, will rely on turning to staff for a legal opinion we received in caucus. And while we normally don't do this, one of the things that council can do is request that we waive privilege. And because this is an item that I think requires the utmost in transparency, it talks about our democratic system, I would like to move that we waive privilege on the issue specifically related to things like the website and biographical information being placed on our website. So I can ask the questions of staff.
Okay. I will accept that. Motion. Is there a second, or Councillors Davie? Discussion on that item or can we just, those in favor, opposed, that's carried. So we have waived privilege. That's a legal terminology that we can therefore share the confidential information that was given to us from our solicitor. Councillor Babbage?
Thank you. So the first question I'll ask is, in particular, to the issue of the website and the biographical information. I think the report talked about the information that you obtained from the province as well as a legal perspective on us providing that information on our website. I'm wondering if you can share with us what the legal opinion in that regard is.
Sorry. I got to get you on. Okay. Go ahead, Leslie.
That's not last thing.
Oh, sorry. I was looking down here. I wasn't looking up. Larry?
The opinion we gave was that the Municipal Elections Act is very clear that municipalities can't make a contribution to a campaign. It's not a question of being, preferring a particular candidate or providing a campaign to one, providing a contribution to one candidate over another. Can't make a contribution to any campaign. And that's money, it's in services, anything that you might imagine. A big part of any campaign is the whole process of getting to know the candidate, providing biographical information about the candidate, the things that the candidate does, the things the candidate has done, things the candidate believes. And these are the sorts of things that define their way into biographical profiles. The suggestion, in our opinion, that the municipality either provide those things on our own website or we provide links on our website so that these things can be provided elsewhere. In our view, this is a kind of contribution. The other opinion we have is that the clerk has a role in the election, an overriding role to prepare for the election. And the role of the clerk is to prepare for an election, to make practices and procedures that permit the municipality to perform the election in a manner that meets all of the requirements of the Municipal Elections Act. Clerk has, using that role, the clerk has, we think, quite rightly taken the position that the municipality should not provide biographical information either directly on the website or indirectly by permitting links to other websites. So the second part of our opinion is we support the decision that the clerk made in her role.
Okay. So if I can just follow up on both of those pieces, starting with the second one, essentially, essentially, what you're saying is that the clerk has a statutory responsibility, much like the chief building official and the chief fire official and so on. And basically, council can't overrule them. It's their decision, is what you're saying?
Absolutely. It's a staff role, an administrative role. The policy decision was made in the statute. was made in the statute. It's a question now of administering it. And the clerk has that role outside of politics.
Okay. And on the, the first part of, of your response, essentially, if we were to provide that information, would it, in a hypothetical situation, I guess, create or put the, the city in a potential, whether we agree with this or not, potentially put us in an, in an awkward position around it, even, I guess, fines or, or legal action or whatever?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Okay. So those were my questions of staff. Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We're dealing, there is a motion on the floor, so that we're dealing only with that.
Okay. If I can ask the clerk to put the revised wording on the screen?
We dealt with the motion, I'm sorry. We're, so we're asking questions related to this entire matter. If we, someone wishes to come forward with speaking to the recommendations from the Compass Kitchener, which is on the second, fourth page?
Right. And that's the motion I indicated I had?
Yes, okay.
So if I can ask just the clerk to, to put it on, on the screen? Because what I've, in light of this, this information, I've put, I've, I've suggested a couple of changes, respecting the fact that we, we can't ultimately direct the clerk on this issue. So what I'm suggesting, and it's seconded by Counselor Davie, that paragraph one, or recommendation one from the, from Compass Kitchener stay the same, that recommendation two become that the city, city of Kitchener write to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing requesting that the municipal act and election registration forms be amended to allow municipalities to include candidate websites and possibly other biographical information on their election websites, and this request be shared with AMO. And then on number three, I'm trying to build in the part about public consultation, so that basically the beginning part of that paragraph changes to that the city further investigate the City of Toronto initiative, including public consultation, to have the province change the Municipal Elections Act to allow permanent res, I mean, the rest stays the same. And number four stays the same. And if I can just briefly speak to this?
Is there a second for that motion?
It's moved second by Counselor Davie. It's on the sheet.
All right. I can't, wasn't that?
Oh, sorry. It was cut off. If I can just briefly speak to it, Mr., Mr. Mayor. I think Compass Kitchener has done an immense amount of, of work on this. And in fact, I'm quite supportive of, of a number of the recommendations that they've made. On the issue specifically with respect to websites and biographical information, I would argue that that information today is as common as phone numbers and, and websites, or sorry, and emails rather, once were. But the reality is, we're constrained. Staff feel that they're constrained on it. And ultimately, it's out of the, the realm of authority that we as, as council have, other than to ask the province to, to change the legislation. Certainly there's, there's, you know, ways around that for candidates, quite frankly. I mean, all somebody needs to do, and I'll use you as an example, have an email address that says, you know, votecarl@votezerformayor.ca. And that very clearly gives you a website and, and somebody could, could figure out the rest. But I think the point being that, and this is where it, it doesn't make sense that, that we're not allowed to do that. And I think if we lobby the province to have that change made, that will make a step in the right direction. Maybe they'll even make that change for this time, although I, I doubt it because it's getting pretty late in the process. On the third part, and, and this is one where, you know, I, I, I bring an interesting perspective to it because, I mean, while it didn't affect me in the, in the age range from two and a half to seven and a half, it certainly impacted on my parents when we first came to this country and weren't able to vote for the, for the first five years that we were in this country until we became Canadian citizens. And yet I've, I've heard many times that particularly in local elections and, and the kinds of country examples that were talked about, that we should open it up to permanent residents. And I think there is some, some strong merit in, in considering that. But it is a fundamental change and one that we should be having some broader dialogue with the community on. So I made a suggested amendment so that we actually do that work and then have it come back to council in, in, in the future.
Okay. Speaking to the motion only then, Counselor Etherington.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. I have some general comments. Can I make those now?
Yes, of course. Related, related to the motions in front of us.
Right. I would just wanted to say that we have to do something in way of action instead of words to reverse this, what the report calls municipal disengagement and voter apathy. And I would like to do it, see some of it happen before the election this fall. I would support a move to treat this report with urgency and reach beyond its recommendations and conclusions. I think based on some of its content, we should take another look at online voting in municipalities where it seems to have increased the number of people exercising their right to vote, even if that is just a slight increase. We need to review the legal advice we're receiving about candidate information. I won't elaborate on that. Some municipalities are obviously doing that. We do, we need to do more to reach out to voters and lobby the province, as the motion says. Instead of further cuts to the election budget, we heard a discussion earlier this afternoon in audit that mentioned how tight that election budget is becoming. I'd like to see us target more money to areas where we can address that lack of voter turnout. I'd also like to do more to show that we want and respect public input on some of our more important subjects. We're doing a little of that, but I don't think we're doing enough. And Mr. Mayor, just one other comment. I don't know whether it's an add to Counselor Ivanovich's motion, but one of the pages in this report seems to be asking us to set a target to improve the City of Kitchener's voter turnout in the 2014 municipal election by, then there's a blank percentage points. I'd very much like to see us do that. And I would suggest, and I'm open to suggestions, to make that 10 percentage points and see what we can do to boost this appalling statistic.
Are you making an amendment to the motion that is in front of us?
Yes, sir.
And it would have to be specific and in writing?
Okay. I'll do it.
Okay. Back to you, Counselor Glenn Graeme.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. I certainly support this amendment and the motion. I'm very grateful for the deep work that Compass Kitchener has done. I was fortunate enough to participate in, in this group a few times. And I've been involved with this issue for 10 years. And I think that we can't rest until we increase voter turnout to at least over 50% municipally. I, it, it escapes me as to why people don't understand how this level of government, which affects their lives most deeply, is the one that they, they most traditionally ignore or, or don't pay the most attention to. We obviously are deeply invested in this, all the people here. I think we need to just help people understand that, you know, if their right was taken away, how would they feel? And that this is a privilege and this is an opportunity. And I think we should extend it to those people who do appreciate it. You know, there's a carrot and stick approach. I don't agree with Australia that has a stick approach. I do think we need to encourage deeper participation. And I like the long-term thinking that Compass Kitchener is, is developing here. I think that, you know, Theron was absolutely right. We have to make the investment in this as a long-term piece. It's absolutely essential. It's about education. It's about showing the connection between that level of caring about your community and then coming out to express that by voting. So certainly I think that the, the province has to loosen the shackles around this, this process. I was very much in favor of the concept of website linkages for a long time. And then I understand that it would really be something we can't support because of the appearance of bonusing individuals. But I don't think that's right. I, I do think we need to get behind sharing as much information as possible. We always talk about transparency and sharing information and open government. If the province is serious about open government, it needs to get behind this in a hurry. And hopefully for this election. This is a concrete example of how they can do this in eight months to make this happen. So I, I hope they take it seriously.
Thank you. Counselor Ainaitis?
Yeah, I will be, through you, Mayor. I'll be supporting the motion. And in particular, coming from immigrant parents myself, I think it's important that, that it's a segment of the population that is, that is not being represented. And I think that's an important issue that we should be looking into. And in particular, another issue that I think is important in, in trying to get more engagement, I tend to think of this as more of a, a long-term view. And I think we need to engage our youth more and as much as we can. And I, I always, I always view youth's outlook as they're the eyes on the street. Us adults, we're always too busy dealing with their lives and going to work and everything else. Where the, today's youth, they know what's happening in the community. They know the issues. They, they understand it better. So I, I think, I think that's something that should be looked at a little further, in particular pushing the school boards further to, to deal with that. And I think putting arbitrary 10% percentage points, I think is, I don't think it's very achievable. I think it's just a, a nice figure to put in there. And I, I, I think it's really truly a long-term thing. And, and this is, 10, 10 percentage points is something that is, to me, if, in the next eight months, I don't think it'd be very achievable. Like, that's a lot of work. And I, I, I'm going to support it, but I, I don't think it's realistic.
Counselor Davie?
Thank you, Mayor Zare. I just want to talk briefly to the online component, voting online. We, we discussed this in the past and voted it down. I don't want to hash too much of it up again, except to say that.
The online is not on the table at this point.
Certainly. I'll, I'll hold those comments then. Do want to thank Mr. Kramer and Compass for the work they did. And I didn't comment at that time, Mr. Mayor, so I would appreciate the opportunity to comment on that now. I think that the work they put before us is great. I, the concern I have with respect to the amendment is this notion of turnout versus engagement. The reason I deeply respect the work Compass Kitchener did is because although they refer several times to voter turnout, and it's, that's merely an indicator. We have to consider the intent here. The intent is to elect a strong representative local government. The intent isn't to get as many people as we possibly can through the turnstile. I do not think that, you know, if, if we were to achieve a 10%, 10 percentage increase, that, that really means very, very little to me. As a matter of fact, I'd be happier to see fewer voters if I knew that they were certainly more engaged, if they were, if they were more knowledgeable, if they were informed. That's why elects a strong local government, not a certain number of people, as I said, through, through the turnstile. And I'm afraid that's where this would end up going. I do think that part of that engagement is the motion as laid out, in that we should be including websites. We can't because of the proc, because of the current rules, but including websites and even some biographical info. If we can find a clean way to do that, I think is, is the right way to go to increase that, that engagement and citizen knowledge.
Just before I go to the next speaker, Counselor Etherington, you may wish to consider what the percentage will be rather than by 10 percentage. This motion that's in front of us doesn't have a base to look at. So I think you'd want to change it to an election 2x percentage. Okay? So just give that some thought and we'll come back to you.
I think I'll withdraw that. Counselor Ivanovich.
Well, I, I don't have your microphone on. And I said I would come back to you. Well, okay. I'll go to you if you're withdrawing it, but then I'll go back to the, the sequence of.
Yeah, I want to withdraw it, Mr. Mayor, because unlike you, I'm forgetful that we, we have a mayor's race and it will probably boost it by about 20% I would think.
Go back to 2000 and, well, don't go back. It didn't necessarily. So we're withdrawing the, the motion. We're back to the, the main motion. Counselor Fernandez?
Thank you. Certainly it's important that we, we move, I think the recommendations, although this report was originally just for information, I think it's great that we're putting forward some recommendations based on all the work that the Compass Kitchener group has done. I think one of the, the things that I read here in this report was, was we do see disenchanted voters, that the wheels of government move very, very slowly. And I know I've, I've explained that time and time again to many of my constituents about they believe that something should happen and why isn't it happening? Why is it taking so long? And I think that may actually be part of, part of the problem. And I did see that identified in, in this report. So how we change that, you know, I mean, if we could take a business model, maybe that would change it. But we are not just a business. We're in the business of customer service. And I think that's also an education component that we need to teach the, the public, that things don't necessarily always happen as quickly as they may in, in a business. So as we try to engage our citizens and our residents, I think one of the most important components is door-to-door. When you're talking to those people and you're bringing back, whether the door's been slammed in your face, because that says a lot. They may be disenchanted. They may also not want to hear what you have to say. Or you engage in a 20-minute debate at the door. Those, those are important issues to bring to the next council, whoever, whoever gets elected. So I think we talk about public engagement, and public engagement is not just hearing what the people say, but really listening to what they have to say. And I believe that's really what Compass Kitchener has done all along in the, in the last couple of years, both with the Anveron study and, and now with this voter turnout, with the report card that they've put forward because they really, really do engage the public. So again, kudos to, to the wonderful work that they've done. I hope that whatever happens in October, that we do see an increase in voter turnout. This is where the, you know, the action happens, folks. This is where we make the difference in the decisions that have, help you and impact you every single day of your life. Whether you walk on the sidewalk or drive on the road or go to the community center or swim in the pool or skate on the rink outside today in freezing cold weather, there are people out there. So come out and make your voices heard because that's the best way that you can actually say, I, I have, I have made my impact. I have done what I'm, I'm responsible for doing.
Counselor Banovich, I'm going to come back to you and close off the debate. Two others. Counselor Galway Seelak?
Yeah, there's been a lot of comments that have already been made, and I'll just keep mine brief. I think Compass Kitchener has the right approach, and their approach is to tackle this on an ongoing basis. I think one of the things that kind of bugs me is we talk about voter turnout leading up to an election, maybe six, eight months before, and we talk about it, how bad it was after the election. But in between, we don't really do a whole heck of a lot. While the Elections Committee, from a city staff perspective, continue on for the efficiency of the actual running of the election, I'd actually like to propose directions to staff, and maybe we just don't see it, but a work plan to continue to try and engage voters throughout the full four years as opposed to really trying to ramp everybody up right before the election and then talk about it after the election, how typically how poor it's been. But really do this on an ongoing basis. And, and we talk a lot about that education piece. I think that that's really important. And whatever we can do, I think we started some of that with the youth form, but seeing from a staff perspective, really a work plan over the course of four years and, and ongoing, what we can do to try and continue to engage citizens and get them out to vote, I think is important. So I would suggest, I'm guessing that would be an amendment because it's traction to staff.
Actually, I think with, with your understanding, it probably could be part of number four, which is already, we're stating that, it's not on the screen here, but it is, Counselor Banovich gave it, so that they follow up on various models and getting voter engagement. So that could be included as part of the direction to Compass Kitchener to come back with those.
No, I'm not suggesting that it comes back with Compass Kitchener. I'm asking it to be a staff-driven. Compass is doing their work. They're doing their outreach and maybe it's in collaboration. But I think from a city staff perspective, it's our obligation to continue on an ongoing basis to working on voter turnout.
Okay. That's fine.
So Compass will do their piece, but I think city staff should also.
Okay. So you, could you quickly write out an amendment and we'll?
Sure.
Add it on there. Counselor Singh?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll be brief as well. I want to thank Mr. Kramer and of course Compass Kitchener for the invaluable work that they've done. If anything, this report highlights the, the, the good work that our citizens committees does in, in helping us and guiding us as well. Obviously, if you, if you look at the past and if you look at the last two elections, simply 24% turnout in 2006 election, around or mid twenties average voter turnout in the 2010 election, clearly what we've been doing hasn't been working. So there, there, there are changes that need to be done. And I support the, the amendment through Counselor Varenovic. I think some, those are some of the dialogue that we need to. I think those are some of the dialogue that we need to engage and encourage the province to make some amendments to the Municipal Act. But I think the suggestions that are put forward through this report itself shows that there are changes that we can do on our own, which have clearly worked in other municipalities, and that's an undertaking that we definitely do need to take. So I would be supportive of the motion, and of course, I would be, I heard the gist of what Counselor Galloway-Silak is proposing, and I agree with her sentiment, and I would support that as well.
Okay. Counselor Bemis, last speaker.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I will support the amendment that Counselor Galloway's proposing as well, but I... Galloway-Silak, thank you, sorry, should know better by now. I'm just wondering, though, if staff can also indicate, I think there's already, I think we should make it formal with what's being proposed, but I think there's already some work being done on a formal engagement strategy, but I'm not sure about that.
This is, I think her motion will be bringing it forward.
Yeah, no, I know, but I'm just wondering, Mr. Wilmer can indicate that, because I think something's already in process?
Mr. Chapman.
Or Mr. Chapman or someone?
Mr. Mayor Zaire, I would remind committee that one of the three principles that you've approved in the open government framework is participation. So the extent to which you believe increased public participation will translate to increased voter turnout, we've committed in 2014 to come back in conjunction with Compass Kitchener with a community engagement policy. And then there's a work plan that sets out a body of work over the next four years. Early on, it's a focus on electronic engagement, but there is other work in the work plan beyond that. So what I would suggest at a minimum is that as we work on that policy, we can come back and talk about how we see it connecting with voter turnout. You may at that point feel that more is required, but I think that'll be a good starting point.
Okay. Counselor Galloway-Silak? We need your motion. We need, we need, we're about to vote. And this is a good example of why we want things in writing, because if we, it takes like the time for motions, then we need to have them in writing. This is according to our new protocol, which I think is a good one. To direct staff to develop an ongoing work plan to increase voter turnout outside of the work Compass Kitchener is doing will be done on a regular basis in between elections. Okay, that is an amendment. This amendment seconded by Counselor Singh. On the amendment, those in favor, opposed, that's carried. On the original amended motion now, recorded vote has been called for. So it's what was on the screen before as well as what you have, what you saw in front of you. Standing vote, those in favor, opposed, that's carried unanimously. Okay, we will now go back to balance of the agenda. And we are into the delegations. Remind all delegations that you have five minutes. In addition to the one outside delegation listed, we have four other delegations to speak. First is Paul Puplo, and this is regarding the development charges. So clause four of the Finance and Corporate Services Committee report. The clerks over here, Page...
Thank you.
Go ahead, your time is running.
Your worship, excuse me, member of the council, my name is Paul Puplo from the Polar Corp Group. I'm here representing Fusion Homes regarding the downtown development charge exemption. Your worship, I have handed out to everybody a one-page brief of my presentation, and I just want to highlight three or four points and then summarize for you. Essentially, on page one, we are in support of the core area of focus for the new urban neighborhood bounded by Cedar, Charles, King Street East, and Betsner South. And of course, there's the map on the page one, which shows the location of the Market Square neighborhood. Number of reasons for inclusion of the Market Square, because it would meet a number of the objectives, I think I've already highlighted that from you in previous, you know, presentations, relating to the diversification of population, creating a catalyst, aligning with the Cedar Street LRT, providing on-street or onsite retail opportunity, providing streetscape design, which I think is very important for the, for King Street coming in from the highway as well as internally, and also providing a catalyst or stimulus for some of the empty spaces at the market. And I think very importantly, number G is no expansions or no need for any water and sewer facilities are needed for this particular case. Point number three really summarizes the case. The barrier to development now is the price a square foot generated for the street area, which we're estimating to be in there 250 to 275 versus the core area of the downtown Kitchener, 350 to 375. We feel that that difference can be addressed through the DC incentive, failing which Fusion will have no other option but to postpone development of the King Street properties and wait five to 10 years until the market conditions change. So essentially, the recommendation to council, your worship and members of council, is that we would like the exemption provided and extended to Betsner Avenue South. I have taken the time to sort of craft up the three recommendations from your Finance and Committee report, to which would makes reference to the extension to Betsner for the exclusion of the development charge calculation. In summary, we feel that the provision that is provided to provides, number one, a sunset clause of 2019. It provides a time limit, as we have indicated. More importantly, it provides a stimulus for the east side, and very importantly, it does not provide any, there's no need for any expansion of any major water or sewer facility, the capacity is there. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we would look forward to council's consideration of this matter and to hopefully extend the boundary for the exemption to the Betsner Street or Avenue South area. If there's any questions, I'll entertain them, Mr. Chairman, and hope I can respond to them accordingly.
Okay. Counselor Galloway-Silak.
Yeah, Paul, I just have one question, and it's with regards, I meant to ask it in committee and I didn't, but it's with regards to, obviously, we only have the ability to...
Excuse me, I'm having a, my hearing is unfortunate, I apologize, my hearing is kind of bad, so if you could maybe sneak a little out of...
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Counselor.
Yeah. I didn't get to ask you this question in committee, because I forgot, but we only have the ability to exempt our portion of the DCs, the region have their own development charges. What happens to your project if you don't get the DCs exempted from the region?
We've had had discussions with the region, and they are somewhat in favor of proceeding with that. We've already had a discussion with the, a couple of the counselors, as well as the individual in charge of the DC bylaw. Their history has been as if the municipality changes it, they will include it as well. We understand that's true, it's that the region is undertaking their DC bylaw almost in parallel with the cities.
But in the event that they don't extend their boundaries, what is the implication to your project?
I think we probably would have to really consider it, because the regional DC bylaw of, I think it's roughly around 13,000, and three is roughly is the city component, and the other, the 10,000 is the regional one. We would have some serious consideration if it doesn't extend it by the region.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, those are the only questions I have for Mr. Puplo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next delegation on this matter is Paul Peter Benninger.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm Peter Benninger. I'm the broker for the listing and the sale of property on Charles, King, and Sterling, owned by Ray of Hope. And with me today is Harry White, CEO of Ray of Hope, who's here to answer any questions you may have. We were here, of course, last Monday at the committee meeting, and we'd like to share some further thoughts with council, since listening to some of your concerns last week. And we continue to seek support to have the Ray of Hope site included in the expanded boundary area. We feel if it is not included, it could affect the potential sale of the property. They've just handed out a map that, you know, as I say, in response to some of the concerns last week, we thought we would ask council to focus on the development charge exemption by looking at boundary expansion around the two light rail transit stops, that at Cedar Street and Borden Avenue, those are the stops that are closest to the market, to the south of the market. And our proposal on the map there is to expand it 300-meter radius around each of the transit station stops. We feel that this expansion of the boundary would keep things financially feasible as far as size goes for the city to manage during the five-year period. I think there was some concern shown last week about the impact of the, of the financial impact to expanding the boundary. And I think there was also some concerns expressed last week about the suitability of other properties within a greater or broader expansion. So in focusing around the station area, we feel it would be more appropriate. It certainly meets, the city has put the MU zoning on the property in and around the station. Your parts program, planning around rapid transit stations, sorry, has certainly indicated this site is important. And of course, it's right beside the light rail. It will support and increase ridership in the early stages of the light rail in and around 2017, which is certainly within this five-year period. It also fits with the regional's stationary planning initiatives in and around light rail again, and of course, provides increase for walkability around the station areas by increasing the density in the population. This also makes sense from a commerce perspective. Ray of Hope is one stop away from the market. We had a good discussion, Harry provided some information, Harry White provided some information, had experience over a number of years operating the Morning Glory Coffee Shop, which is just south of Frederick Street, Frederick and Benton. And as Harry described it, what they often found in that area, that the large buildings of the old Eaton's Square and the Delta Hotel are somewhat of a breaking point in the downtown, that a lot of the office users and so forth, you know, use the facilities of commerce north of that area and don't so much travel into the south area where the market is and so forth. And as he said, that, you know, he found this to be more about community south of Frederick Benton, and that in looking at these two transit stops, really what you're doing is supporting that community and supporting, of course, the commerce of the market. The Ray of Hope site would most likely offer more moderately priced condominiums, as Mr. Puplo just indicated about the Fusion site. These condos would be in a more affordable opportunity than the central area. The price of land is substantially less expensive, and this type of product could certainly benefit and be very important in terms of DC exemptions. It can make a big difference to a developer in considering a property such as this. Certainly, the inclusion of the...
Give half a minute to clear...
Thank you. The inclusion of the Ray of Hope site would give certainty to a developer. You would have a sunset clause of five years. As we talked about last week, there'd be a good impact of tax base generated. It would be a good overall investment of the, by the city. And I might propose that if there was any site-specific concerns about additional services, expansion of roads or services, sewage requirements for this site...
Your microphone is off now, Peter. Other questions for the delegation? Oh yes, there is one. Counselor Benavich.
Thank you very much, and thanks for coming in, Peter. I guess my question to you is this, and as we look at this issue and, you know, how do we balance the various things that are being asked of us and proposals that are being put before us? I guess I see, you know, originally last week, you came and suggested that your property be considered, which starts at Sterling and goes over. Now we're potentially moving this not only to Ottawa Street, which is what, something that we looked at, but what you're advocating here is going even beyond Ottawa Street, which is something we've never talked about in this process. And I guess I'm just trying to understand what the rationale for that is, and how do we balance that against the argument that, you know, part of the reason for the LRT investment is to see intensification in downtown happen? And quite frankly, the LRT in and of itself will start looking after this broader area that you're proposing here. So I'm wondering if you can help us understand that.
Well, I think the 300 meters barely stretches past Ottawa as you look at it here. If you wanted to stop it at Ottawa, the rationale was it's 300 meters around a transit stop versus taking in the entire area that we spoke about last week, which stretched all the way from downtown out to Ottawa Street. So there's a substantial amount of area that isn't included that we talked about last week, because your concerns raised were, you know, those of financial nature. And I'd say, so when you look at it, you know, the region wants to see intensification around transit stops, so that's what we're proposing here. You've got the two transit stops, as shown on the map. If you build the intensification up there, you know, the transportation between the station at Borden Avenue and the market is, you know, minutes away. So you've got, you've got all that intensification around that transit stop that can easily get to the market.
Okay, so are you suggesting in your proposal here that, that in fact, we would use the existing boundary, but in these two particular instances, so it's basically be the existing boundary plus the two 300-meter areas around the transit stations, but the stuff in between would not be included?
The existing boundary in the downtown?
Yeah, the existing boundary that's being proposed in the report.
Well, I think that's worth considering, yes. Is planning, yeah, that's exactly right.
So that's what you're asking for?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I guess my next question would end up being of staff as to whether or not that's even something that's doable.
Who from staff would like to comment on that? Corey, Corey, please.
Through the chair, council can set whatever exemption areas it wants. That's your purview. There's no restrictions in the development charge bylaw that prohibits that from happening. I would suggest that the cost impact figures that staff provided, the majority of what we would have estimated would have been within the area that the delegation has suggested for the secondary circle, so essentially between Sterling and Ottawa Street.
I didn't know you turned it off.
My fault. So just to be clear then, are you saying we could go with the existing boundary, which goes up to Madison, correct? And then expand it to do... And then expand it to do the 300 meters around the two stations?
Through the chair, you can do whatever you want. At the end of the day, whatever you exempt, there is a cost implication for what you exempt. Perhaps for some context, I know that planning staff, as part of their planning around rapid transit station, planning work over the next few years, will be looking at incentives along the corridor in areas like these, whether that may be a more appropriate place for this discussion or not.
Okay. And would it in any way, would it be bad planning, I guess, to look at something like this where there would be potentially a gap?
Allow the answer to that, then you're way over the top.
Okay. Thank you.
Through the chair, I don't think this is an approach that staff would support. Our position has been that in over the next five years, we need to concentrate development within the downtown, and perhaps in the future through the parts review, it may be more appropriate to consider an extension, but at this point, we wouldn't support this kind of approach.
Okay. But there's a second round, I'd like to... Okay. Mr. Wilmer, you want to add something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In response to that question, a couple of observations. One is, it will be difficult for council to justify why these two rapid transit station areas and not the other seven. And secondly, there's really been not, there's been no dedicated process to engage stakeholders throughout the rapid transit corridor on this question of the desire to amend the boundaries. This started really with a report from staff to council suggesting that the council confirmed the existing boundaries, so that we would have that certainty or that direction as we prepare the background study. So I think it was Mr. White and Mr. Benninger that said they only realized this just recently, within the last week or two, when it became evident that other property owners in the corridor or in the rapid transit station areas were asking for an expansion of the boundary. So we've really never engaged the community on this question. It's just that we've got now two property owners coming forward saying, here's a case that you could use to justify their properties and their neighbors' properties being in. So we really, we, council and staff, pride ourselves on community engagement. There's been no community engagement on this question.
Councilor Fernandez?
Thank you. You're aware, Mr. Benninger, that by looking at our report from last week, that with each area that we exempt, the larger the area, the more revenue we stand to lose or not receive. You understand that, right? You...
I do understand that the incentives stimulate development, which creates property taxes. As we demonstrated last year, or last Monday, in our model, the payback was two and a half years.
Okay, but that wasn't my question. My question was just making sure that you understand that we would not, sure, we're going to get some tax base, but that doesn't come back, come immediately. If the development was to happen regardless of, without the exemption, we would still get that tax revenue, we'd get that immediately. But if we exempt an area, we stand to lose, in this case, my understanding from the chart that staff provided to us, depending on how far the boundary is expanded to Betsner, we're looking at $3 million, and if we were to expand for 10 minutes, we're looking at over $4 million.
I guess my question back would be is why are you doing it in the downtown then? Isn't it the same situation in the downtown? If the development was going to take place in any case, aren't you losing revenue?
Okay, but that's a decision that was made previous to my time on council, so now I'm looking at the implications of making a decision to broaden that boundary and the implications to our DC fund. So I have a further question of staff, unless you had...
Well, I guess my only, again, I'd ask back, are you not considering whether the downtown is going to be exempted again? You said that was before your time, but are you not considering it again? Isn't it due now, and you're considering it again? Unless I'm mistaken?
Well, that's part of the report, is whether we're going to decide that or not. I guess that will be the liberty of council's decision.
Right. So all I'm saying is that the examples that we've used are exactly the same examples that you would use in the downtown, which is the area that you're considering, that the, you know, putting in place this exemption is going to stimulate development, which is going to stimulate revenue, tax revenue. It's the same case here.
Understood. The other question I had was, maybe it was more of a point of clarification. You stated that you were going, that the site that you were looking at would be affordable housing...
No, I didn't use the word affordable. I think I said modestly priced.
Okay.
More modestly priced.
Okay. So I just wanted to clarify that. I wanted to make sure I understood what I heard. Modestly priced. Okay. In relation to, for example, ArrowLofts, which is significantly higher, would you foresee that modestly priced housing would have a draw in itself?
Yes. I think it would provide an alternate opportunity as what's being proposed in the downtown areas.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I have a question of staff. Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood that without the DC, with the DC fund being in a negative position, if we accept any of these proposals, whether it's current boundary or all the way to a 10-minute, that would just continue to put our DC fund in a more negative position?
Mr. Chapman?
Through the chair, no, it would not. Essentially, the development charges will still be paid. The only issue here is who pays them. To the extent you provide an exemption, it's the taxpayer that will pay that cost.
Right. I apologize. I do remember you saying that in the report. So it's going to come out of another pot of money, and I think we were talking about coming out of capital. Is that right? Okay. That's good. I wanted to make sure that, again, this is sort of an education piece for the public that may be watching or sitting here.
Mr. Wilmer, did you want to respond or add some additional information?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the question of why allow a certain exemption in the downtown and not elsewhere, there is a reason for that, and that relates to the Provincial Places to Grow Plan. The province, through Places to Grow Legislation and Plan, establishes a target for us to achieve in the urban growth center, which is 200 residents and jobs per hectare. That is a fairly dense area, and our urban growth center is defined as our downtown. So even if council decides to make a change to the downtown boundary and the development charges bylaw, the province has used our current downtown boundary to define our urban growth center. So there is a provincial policy reason why we are justified in taking a different approach in the downtown than elsewhere.
Okay. Councilor Banovich, you have one more question?
Just, yeah, a couple of questions of staff, yet...
Any further questions for the delegation?
No, they were staff.
Okay. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Stan.
Okay. I'm just wondering if I can get some clarity from staff on what happens with respect to any motion we deal with today, how that feeds into the broader portion or the broader issue of the DC bylaw. So does a decision today get revisited at the time of the DC bylaw, or does a decision today essentially become the decision and it just simply becomes part of the approval of a DC bylaw?
Mr. Chapman?
Through the chair, I think it's probably most appropriate for the chair to rule on that question, but my suggestion would be it will all come down to the strength of the wording in the motions. And if the wording is heavily qualified, that these are approvals in principle, subject to final bylaws and studies, I think it will send a signal that it is open for consideration or reconsideration as those final documents come forward. If definitive wording is passed today that basically would make a decision on maintaining an exemption, set that area and refer it to the background study process, that may require a different approach if that is to be reconsidered ultimately. But again, that's a decision that will rest with the chair.
Okay. And in terms of the resolutions, and Council Davy will be bringing this forward, if you turn to the committee report on page two, item number four, the first paragraph, and then the next part, the paragraph which has some of the bold and printed, that is just for information for us, why we're deferring it. So the next clause would be the italics portion, which would be the extension. That was the one that was deferred, so we'd be going back to the italics. And then the top of the next page is the third paragraph, which deals with signaling the DC's ending in 2019. So the first paragraph specifically says two things, that yes, approval is being given in principle, and that the end of the first paragraph, obviously subject to the background study, which we haven't yet received, and the development charges bylaw, which is the normal part of this process, which would apply then to both the existing and should the extension to Betsner be approved, it would apply to that as well.
So you're saying, if I understand you correctly, that if the, if, let's say we move a motion that includes the extension, your view is that that is simply in principle and would be coming back?
That's what the, yes, that's correct, because that is what the original motion was. And keep in mind that we are doing this in order to give some direction for the background study to be done. We can't take any further steps until the background study is complete. Likewise, with the bylaws.
Okay. And then my last question of staff then is on the point that was made around the cost of any DCs. And yes, it's true that those end up being born in one way or another through our budgets that include, that obviously everybody contributes to, that pays taxes in the city of Kitchener. But at the same time, any additional taxes that we're getting ahead of time would also help in that situation, would they not? In other words, if this spurs development that we wouldn't get in the next five-year time period and starts generating taxes in that time, five-year time period that otherwise wouldn't happen, does that not improve our financial situation?
Mr. Chapman?
Through the chair, yes, but there were some ifs in that statement, so I think the key question is whether or not this will spur development that otherwise would not happen, or simply shift development that would happen elsewhere in the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Davy, speaking, actually, do you have a question? If not, I'd like to get the motion on the floor.
I do have a question. Actually, bring the motion on the floor first, then as...
So you want to do that first, then?
Sure. Bring the motion forward?
Yes.
Okay. It's been moved by myself and seconded by Councilor Banovich, actually, that item number four on the Finance and Corporate Services Committee be adopted.
Okay.
And my question...
Just to be clear, that excludes the words, the second paragraph, starting with "that consideration of..." We're just dealing with...
That's correct, actually, and I would actually probably be moving an amendment to this as well. First, my question, though, in, on the report on page four dash three, it lists the difference in costs, if we move to Betsner at $1.2 million. And I think I had asked, and if you don't have the exact figure, that's fine, but I think I had asked if there would be a difference if that expansion to Betsner came into place two years into the DC bylaw, so in 2016 instead of 2014.
Is that you, Corey, that just signed in? Okay. Corey Bloom?
Through the chair, there is another development that was included in those numbers, and our expectation is that that development will proceed in the next two years, so that number would be slightly less once that other development has occurred.
Okay. And the next question for the development with respect to Fusion Homes, did you include all three phases in that, in this difference as well?
Just leave your microphone on.
Through the chair, yes. That includes all three phases.
Okay. And so that's an interesting point, too, because from Fusion's presentation, I believe the final phase would have been outside the 2019 timeframe, so...
No, I think that the building permits were achieved prior to 2019.
Were they all achieved prior to?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, very good.
There was a, just to make sure that council is also referring to a memo we received today from Corey Bloom, which had this information in, in terms of the values.
Correct.
Further questions?
Do you have any other questions, Mayor Zaire? Before, I just want to think on the amendment for a moment.
No.
Are there other questions in the queue?
There are no questions in the queue.
Okay. Last question then, if we were to send clear direction as opposed to possibly rehashing this, would this possibly save any internal staff time or cost if we set the clear direction now as opposed to having it rehashed?
Mr. Chapman?
Through the chair, to the extent we're not required to work up multiple scenarios, yes, it would save time and cost. There is a cap to the fees that the consultant charges, but if they don't use all of their time up, there could be savings there. So more certainty, yes, today would reduce the amount of staff and consultant effort.
Okay. In that case, I would make those changes as opposed to have them in brackets. I mean, I don't like it's required to be written out, but if everyone just wanted to turn to the item number four, and I'll just read out the differences. So again, in the very first sentence, I would remove the words "in principle." I'd also remove the word "that" after exclude, because I think that's a typo.
So, and you would, the second part was what?
Right after it says "to exclude that," remove the word "that," because I think that's a typo, just a typo. So that approval be given in principle to exclude that downtown Kitchener, that shouldn't be there, anyway. I would also exclude the final sentence, not the full sentence, actually, starting with "subject to the 2014 development charges bylaw" to the end of that clause. And then obviously, the clause is already removed following that, that you mentioned, Mayor Zaire.
Okay.
And then I would, in the part about extending to Betsner, I would change that, just add the words "in 2016," so that in 2016, the downtown boundary be extended to Betsner. And the rest of the motion would remain as is.
Okay. So to be clear then, the, your amendment at this point in time is the approval be given to exclude downtown Kitchener from the development charges?
Correct.
Okay. And then in the italics, to include the years 2016 to 2019?
Correct.
Okay.
And the removal of the final sentence in the first clause?
Yes, I understand that. Okay. Speaking to the amendment, Councilor Glenn Graham.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I do support the extension to Betsner, but I can't support this amendment because I don't believe that it meets the spirit of what they're looking for. We're trying to set some clear guidelines and to achieve something that would benefit the city, and I think this is, you know, trying to split the hairs here, but it's really not accomplishing the extent of what they need. And I believe that if we're going to do it, we need to do it properly. So I do appreciate the effort and the spirit of it, but I think that if this is defeated, I would like to move another amendment, basically similar to what the developer Fusion Homes has put forward. I'll just say briefly that the market as a catalyst has not materialized on its own. And as to the question Mr. Wilmer said about why this area and not others, well, the market is a separate area. The market is a distinct neighborhood. The market needs our assistance, it's a gateway, and I believe that it is very, very close to the downtown. It hasn't been treated equally. It needs that boost in the arm to help elevate it in terms of the mixed use of affordable housing and other people that have money to spend, not only the market, but to animate that end of town. If we're going to do a downtown property, it's not just a few blocks. It's got to be, you know, a defined area, and the market is, cannot be left on its own to fend for itself. So I believe that this does deserve our support, and for that reason, I can't support this amendment.
Okay. Just, Councilor Davy, and just for clarification, I think the, in the italics, I believe this is what you also meant, that it's being extended to Betsner between Charles and King? That is a...
That's a...
Yeah. So that this, but that's not what the italics says, so I think those words, that was the Okay, just so that we're clear on that. Otherwise, it's, you know, for the entire area of Betsner along, on the other side of King as well. I would, I will not be... as well. Uh, I would, uh, I will not be supporting the, um, the, the amendment to exclude those words, uh, because I think, first of all, it's, uh, you have to take the each phrase at its, as its own. This is the first one, the first phrase is to, um, uh, to have an exemption policy. And then the secondary one with the italics is to have the extension. I would support the first one as it was written, but not the italics. Therefore, um, I, I cannot support the, um, uh, the motion for the amendment, rather. So I, I'll have you close off a debate on, on that, uh, Mr. Counselor Davey. Counselor Galway Seelock?
Yeah, um, I am supportive of the direction that staff has, um, outlined in their report. Um, I have no problem with the, the way that we're, um, going to look at funding, um, the DC exemptions that currently exist, but I don't support, um, the boundary extension. I think that, um, there's lots of areas within not only what we could determine to be some of the downtown area, but also other areas in the city that could use a boost and a shot in the arm. And I think at some point, we have to continue to, or we have to hold firm on our boundaries. It's a huge cost to the rest of the taxpayers of the city of Kitchener to ask to continue to provide exemptions, um, to properties that have been purchased under the, um, notion or, or under the timeframe where no exemptions, um, were given to those properties. So I think we run a very slippery slope in trying to extend boundaries, um, and we ask the taxpayers across the whole city, um, to cover that, those exemptions. And I do believe that while we heard from the one delegation that there's a chance the region may, um, also exempt their DCs, there's no guarantee of that either. And so even if we were to exempt the DCs, the region may not. And then again, we're subsidizing, um, that development and the region's not taking on their, um, percentage as well. So I think it's a difficult ask to ask the rest of the community to, um, cover the costs of this increase. And I do believe that part of the, um, LRT debate that's been going around is really that it will help, um, to provide that injection, that boost, um, that will help these properties further down King Street. Um, it's also mentioned in our report that it's the, the, um, DC exemptions really need to be an intense area for them to be effective. And I think we are using the area that we've always kind of divined our downtown, um, with for the exemptions. So I have no problem extending the, um, exemptions to 2019, but given that clear direction that they're going to end then, um, but I will not, um, be supportive of extending the boundary.
Counselor Etherington?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I do support the extension of the boundary. Uh, and I would say that this is in my ward for at least the past four decades, showing my age. I've witnessed a rags to riches scenario in the East End, East End-West Ends of the downtown. Since being elected three years ago, I've seen little improvement to that inner-city situation where the West End of my Ward Nine has thrived while the ailing East End and what should be a booming revitalization, revitalized entrance to the city continues to decline. One look at the taxpayer cash we pump into the Kitchener market reflects that decline, and, uh, especially in front of the market where we can no longer, we can't, uh, lease the retail properties. I want to do whatever I can to change this situation where East End downtown communities continue to be the poor cousin in the core. And I also very much want to see us develop, uh, that kind of gateway to the downtown. While appreciating it will cost us short-term lost revenue, I think expansion of the development incentives to include the Polk Corp Fusion Block will help correct the imbalance between the West and East Ends of my ward. It will also recoup taxable income on the Fusion Block, uh, without boundary expansion and, uh, I'm sorry, with, with that extension of, uh, incentives. And without that, this site will remain an ugly East End I saw for at least another three, five, maybe more years. For the sake of that East End community, I don't think we can afford to ignore the Fusion land, which has been studied by counselors and staff for several years. Uh, for the sake of the community, I think we can afford that expansion of boundaries. In order to help improve the health of those East End communities, I support the inclusion of the Fusion property in the downtown incentive area and would also consider a one or, I'm sorry, I do support it, and I particularly want to see a crystal-clear definitive vote on this issue. I particularly don't want to see it coming back in June or any more waffling on this. I'd like to see a clear decision tonight. And, uh, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Just to be clear, when you made a comment about we haven't been able to rent certain properties, you were referring to the market. It's not our property. It's just to make sure that anybody who's listening to that, it's private sector. Counselor Fernandez?
Thank you. Um, just quickly, I think what's really important is that we have, um, allowed many years of downtown incentives based on the identified urban growth core by the province, as, uh, Mr. Wilmer was, was kind enough to clarify for us. Uh, I will support the recommendation by staff, but reluctantly, because I think that there's a time when we need to allow business and commerce to spur itself on. And although there may be, uh, it may, incentives may help, um, I think business begets business. And if we continue to incent, we, we're doing an injustice to the outside areas, uh, of our community who will not see the capital funds for capital investment and, and capital projects. And since my understanding from the, from the report is that that is where the monies will come from in the upcoming years, if we take, continue with this exemption, because we no longer have the EDIF program, um, and please tell me if I'm making an incorrect assumption, uh, I think that it's really important that we, uh, set a very clear sunset clause so that any development that has been, um, undertaken or discussed knows exactly when that sunset clause is going to happen. Um, any further boundary expansion, I think is, is too costly, um, at this point in time for the rest of the city. We've done what we can, and I think it's time to let the, the snowball continue moving on its own accord, on its own accord.
Okay. Two more speakers. Counselor Urbanovich?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I will, uh, be supporting the, the motion that's, um, that's before us today. I, I do that somewhat struggling because I'm, I'm trying to, to balance a, a number of things. Number one, uh, I, I recognize, uh, the, the fact that we've had a program in place for a number of years. It's done some work, but it hasn't done everything that, uh, that we needed to do. Um, secondly, I recognize that we have a, a number of requests here about lands that are, that are ready for, uh, for, for development. And while I do understand, um, the, the request that takes us down, uh, essentially to the block that would be bound by, by Sterling, uh, Charles, Borden, and, and King to, uh, to address those lands, um, it's, it's clear that there isn't an appetite, uh, around this issue to go any farther with respect to, um, what's being considered. I'm not even sure that in the end that there's an appetite, um, to, to take it as far as, as Betsner. I, I think some very good points have been made around, um, the issue of the market district and, uh, what we need to do, um, to, to see that area continue to grow and, and to develop. I think that's, uh, that is something that needs to happen. Um, while, while there has been efforts made on our part and, uh, on the part of the private sector to, uh, to see the, the market district flourish, it hasn't reached, uh, where quite frankly, it needs to be by this, uh, by this point in time. And it needs, um, to, to have some additional support, uh, in conjunction with the rest of the, uh, the downtown district. Um, I'm not convinced that in the long run, I, I hope that the region's investment in the LRT will spur the, the rest of, of the area in terms of the kind of development that, uh, that we're looking for. But I think fundamentally, until, uh, you know, this next five years passes by, we see what's happening, the LRT is up and running, um, at, at that point in time, it'll be subject to a, a future council to, to deal with that issue and, and to factor all those realities and make appropriate decisions accordingly.
Okay. Just before I have, uh, Counselor Davey, uh, close it off the debate as the mover of the motion, uh, I'll just make two brief comments in my rationale. Uh, I will not be supporting the extension to, to Betsner or any further, obviously, as well, uh, for the simple fact that from time to time, particularly with developments, we, the city are chastised for moving the goalposts on rules and regulations. And so in this particular case, we would be moving the goalposts, and we would have, uh, unleveled the playing field in terms of people who have been purchasing inside versus outside that boundary. And the second reason, uh, is that this property, uh, was purchased with the knowledge that the incentives were not available. And, uh, that also, and now we're moving the goalposts to include that, so I cannot support the expansion. And, uh, we will be, we'll deal with all three paragraphs separately, yes. But we will first be dealing with the, uh, the amendment removing those clauses. So, uh, Counselor Davey, closing off debate.
Uh, thank you. A, a few points. I am sensitive to your comments, Mayor Zare, on, um, the analogy of moving the goalposts. And that's precisely why I amended the original extension to Betsner to 2016. I have heard from, um, other developers and with the exact same concern, uh, and they, they were satisfied with a delay in any new boundary of, of two years. So that, that was exactly my rationale. Um, I wanted to comment again on the suburbs, uh, supporting the downtown, and that's, that's where I get, that's where the real, the confusion is here. And whether any member of council agrees with it or not, we're all looking into a crystal ball. And the question is, do we think that the development will happen anyway? And if so, how long? And if it happens at a further time, I mean, the reality is, um, uh, high-rise, extremely dense, um, developments do not happen typically very far outside of the downtown. It's, it's much more rare than it is around, um, around these sorts of transit routes. And I truly believe that if we don't approve this, then some of these developments will occur much later in the future, and we'll end up costing, uh, we'll be getting that tax revenue much later. Um, the last thing I wanted to comment on was my preference on this. I mean, going to 2016 and speaking to Counselor Glenn Graham's concern, this is my, my compromise. So I want to be clear that if this doesn't go through, I won't be supporting an expansion of the boundary. That's, that's my compromise. And I'm not sure how comfortable you are in support of this, but, um, I fear that if this doesn't go through, then we will not see an expansion to Betsner at all.
Okay. The first item is the amendment to the motion, which will be to delete the words in the first line, "principle," uh, well, let me read the first line. It's easier that way. "Approval be given, uh, to exclude downtown Kitchener." So it's deleting those other words. And to delete the, uh, the last sentence, part of the sentence, from the words "subject to the 2014" and on. That's in the first paragraph. So I think we will take the, uh, the amendment for that first, and the addition of the years, we will take that as a separate amendment, uh, for the very reasons that you just talked about. So is there any, would, yes, go ahead, Counselor Fernandez?
Just wanted to make sure I understood completely what that last sentence was. Um, my-
So this, this would firm it up that it is council making a, a final decision on this, and that there would, uh, it, with that going out, the, I think, I think the reason for the amendment was so that it did not come back and would not be dealt with once more. It would be the exemption, not the extension at this point, just the exemption is fine.
So that staff would have a clear direction as they worked forward with the DC charges?
That's correct.
By law. Okay, that's good.
Okay. So we all clear on that? This is just on the deletion of those, those words? Recorded vote? Okay. We still have up the, oh, that's where it is. Okay. Okay, that motion carries. Uh, yes, those in favor? Opposed? Now, that was just the amendment. So I'm now going to deal with the, um, I think, the other amendment first. And this is to clause two, the italics paragraph. It was to add the, uh, phrase related to the 2016, in 2016, that the boundary be extended to Betsner.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Bloom has pointed out, uh, other factors-
Here that council may wish to consider. Mr. Bloom's pointed out that if, if you look at page four dash five of the staff report to committee, the lands that were the subject of the extension to Betsner were not only from Charles to King, but also on the other side of King to the extent of the mixed-use corridor zoning. So I'm not sure whether that was council's intent or not.
You're actually, you're actually correct. Um, and we were thinking of, we, we got caught up in the, the Fusion property only, but that was the original intent. And those are the dollar numbers that, uh, staff had presented. So with that clarification, then the, actually, the, the words between Charles and King would not be correct. Uh, perhaps it could be in there as defined or outlined by staff in report such and such.
Exactly. Thank you.
Okay. So the amendment, though, is dealing only with the words "in 2016." Clear on that? Those in favor of the amendment? Recorder vote? Okay. I think we'll have all recorder votes on this. Those in favor? That motion is carried. Okay, we will now go back to the amended paragraph one. And recorder votes been called for? Ready on this? Go get ready for recorder votes on everything. We voted on the exclusion first only, the, the amendment to remove words?
Well, that's essentially, these are the last paragraph, one is the paragraph one.
It does, but procedurally, uh, there could be a difference.
I think it was an amendment to that.
Well, we haven't, there was an amendment to remove the words, and that procedurally, I'll look to the clerk for assistance here, but I think we'd have to go, in effect, it does, but we were taking amendments. Okay?
Through you, Mayor Zare. That is correct. Um, someone might have voted in favor of applying the amendment, but, uh, may not be in favor of what the eventual amended clause looked like.
That's correct. Okay, those in favor? And you will see, you'll see why in a moment. And you will see, you'll see why in a moment. Those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. What that was doing was putting the existing policy in place. Now, we will vote for the...
I think I made it clear in my comments that I support continuing the downtown exemption. But with you removing the word "in principle," I can't support it because it means it's not coming back and it's not subject to the D.C. bylaw. So that's why I couldn't support it, because those were the amendments. But I support the D.C. continuing. So how were the two, I guess I still don't understand, how were the two votes different? Like, I know you voted different, so help me understand.
I want to get, I want to move forward.
Okay, that's fair.
Okay. This is now the italics with the amendment of 2016 in it. This is for the extension. Let's be clear, this is extension period. Counselor Fernandez, you have your speaker on? Those in favor? Someone not vote correctly from the, that's right. You want to go to Betsner. You voted incorrectly, then. Well, that's, but it won't go to Betsner then. If you did not intend that vote to be, yes? You may not like part of it, as I didn't either. I voted for the 2016, but I'm voting against the principal motion. Those in favor? Those opposed? That motion is carried. The third paragraph is, in essence, signaling the closure of this in 2019. Those in favor, standing vote? Those opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you, everyone who's here on that item. We will now move on to the next delegation, who is Terry Ross, and this is to do with Community Infrastructure Services, number five, the sidewalk on Kennedy and Palmer. Mr. Ross. Welcome. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Last week, I was able to express the lack of interest in this proposed sidewalk in Boulevard for Palmer and Kennedy Avenues. The loss of parking for the rentals, the loss of green space in front of all the homes, and the loss of healthy trees that can never really be replaced. So thank you for giving me the time needed to meet with the people in our neighborhood. With a joint effort from other neighbors, we knocked on all the doors, and if there was no one on, no one home, we came back again the next day. I personally came home with some fresh baked pastries, Easter eggs, and cookies for our multicultural neighborhood. There are a total of 40 single-family homes or rentals on Kennedy and Palmer, and I also refer to Kent and Kennedy because two of these homes are affected as well. Of these, there are 10 rentals, and we were able to make contact with five of the owners of the rentals who do not live on site. And of the 40, two were empty and two were not home to be surveyed. In total, we met with 44 people. Forty-one of these people do not want the sidewalk installed. One person is for the installation, and two are neutral due to conflict of interest. There were a number of comments that I cannot share in mixed company, but some of the concerns were, no one wishes to see the trees removed or damaged, it will ruin the neighborhood tree cover, and all see it as a waste of money and state that other areas of the city need to have a sidewalk where there are none now at the moment. I would like to have been able to communicate with the other rental owners, and I thank the city for sending out the notices last week to the residences in our area. It left an impression with the residences and all the citizens, and it helped us get a positive vote in my favor. One resident called me over just before I left, and she had more to say, which I'm not going to repeat, but she gave me two pages of information, her comments, on the report that's posted online. There is another issue that's not been mentioned in the report, and that's the shifting of Kennedy Avenue approximately one foot north. That's because of the hydro poles. So I would ask tonight that council vote against the installation of the sidewalks in the Boulevard, where there are presently none, and ask the engineering department to take another look at installing a buffer curb or something similar around each of the poles. That will give them the distance that is required, that will also act as a traffic calming situation and show designated parking on Kennedy Avenue. There's also, there's one post there that when hydro is contacted, the post is actually beside number three Kennedy Avenue, and it's at a laneway. That one definitely should be moved, because at least once a month, it gets hit by people going in the lane. That is about the summary of today. I mentioned everything last week, and I was, in an email that was sent to me, it was that do not bring up last week's concerns, because they have already been noted. That's it today, sir.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate you taking that to heart, so that we, I think all of us were here at that time and do recall those comments. Counselor Etherington.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I had some comments, brief comments.
Questions of the delegation?
No questions.
Counselor Fernandez.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ross, for coming in and for the time that you took speaking to all of the residents. I just want to make sure I understand very clearly. You said you spoke to 44 people?
Correct.
One was neutral, and two were a conflict of interest?
There are city employees that said they work in City Hall.
Okay, gotcha. And this was not, this was on Kennedy and on Palmer, right?
Kennedy and Palmer, correct.
Okay, so you covered everybody. You said that there were a number of negative responses, which you don't want to share with us at this time. Is there, when you spoke to these, the people, acknowledging that there is already a sidewalk, was there any concerns raised about accessibility for people who, you know, I mean, the pictures you have, that we have here are from the summer, but regarding people being able to walk along Kennedy with strollers, or if they have any physical impairments? Was there anybody raising any of those concerns in the comments that you had and your discussion with them?
No, just, we have a number of seniors, seniors as in in their late 80s. They do walk around the neighborhood. They did not express any concern, except for the fact that it was a waste of money. We have a couple of young families in the area with twins. The one has a double stroller, and her comment was, I wish everybody would shovel the sidewalk to the full width because of the double stroller.
Okay. The other question I wanted to bring up to you is, as I see that Palmer heading towards the Iron Horse Trail, what happens to the residents when they come to Hurst Avenue and they want to go to the Iron Horse Trail? Because the picture I have here doesn't show a connecting sidewalk.
That's correct, there is no connecting sidewalk. They just stop at the edge of the road, look both ways, and cross that 20, 25 feet to the Iron Horse Trail. Whereas if a small additional sidewalk would be put in, it would cut off five feet, but that would only affect the people going to the right, not to the left. Or the trail also, it's probably not shown there, but there's also a path that goes directly across the creek. There's a small bridge there as well.
Okay, so you've also answered an additional question. So you're saying that there's about a 25-foot difference from the curb of Hurst Avenue to the Iron Horse Trail? Is that kind of what you were saying?
That's correct. And people now as well, when they're coming from Cortland North down Palmer, they will get to the corner of Kennedy and Palmer, and they actually go out on the roadway and make a beeline for the Iron Horse Trail instead of walking down the sidewalk, because it's shorter. And we have the ability in our neighborhood, there's not a lot of traffic flow, which is really nice. People are surprised, new neighbors that have moved in the neighborhood are actually surprised at how quiet our neighborhood is. We don't have that traffic flow like other high-density areas.
Okay, that was my other question was, I mean, you're not an engineer, and you're not a traffic study person. You're saying that the traffic is low-flow, residential moving into their, you know, from one street to the next, going home? Or is it other traffic that you would see? Is it a shortcut in any way, shape, or form?
Back when MTD was at full capacity, at about 4:30 in the afternoon, there'd be a lot of traffic. There is none. With Schneider's eliminating, I actually used to work there for 20 years myself, I used to walk to work, the, there's nobody there. Nobody is, that works at Schneider's parks anywhere down, like, the school has a property, a parking lot between Sterling and Kent. Nobody parks there to come and work at Schneider's.
Okay. I don't know how much time I have left, but I just wanted to ask about the school. Where is the, I have 30 seconds, okay. Where is the school located in relation to this?
Cortland Avenue School is...
That's okay, I know exactly where it is.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Counselor Singh.
Yes, thank you. In last committee meeting, council had also asked for feedback from GRAC, which is Grand River Accessibility Advisory Committee. Did you get a copy of that correspondence, or?
No, I did not.
I'm going to ask a quick, you know, as to their response, and then if you can respond further to that.
Okay.
So I'll just read it out, word by word, just a brief part of it. It is GRAC's position that any time road infrastructure is being upgraded and created within the city limits as sidewalks or multi-use paths be installed on both sides of the road. This would not only benefit people with mobility issues and disabilities, it would also make travel by anything other than cars safer. It would also benefit drivers from having accidents, or, you know, pertaining to accidents due to unexpected objects and people being on the road due to lack of better pathways. Related to that response, can you comment why it's not advisable having sidewalks on both sides?
Just for your information, GRAC, and maybe other people in the audience, may not know what it is. It's the Grand River Accessibility Advisory Committee that advises all of our councils related to disability issues.
Okay. We do have some people, there is one resident in the area that is wheelchair-bound, right on the corner of Hurst and Palmer. She is snowbound most of the winter because it's, the areas haven't been cleaned. That's for her. That also includes getting onto the Iron Horse Trail because of lack of plowing. So by having more sidewalks on there, in the summertime, it may be okay for people who are wheelchair-bound to proceed, but during the winter, it's going to restrict them even more, and I think that would cause more frustration and resentments by people with disabilities than having these extra temporary benefits.
So, again, sidewalks are not for the primary purpose of residents only on the street itself. There's throughway traffic, pedestrian traffic. You've mentioned it's lessening traffic over the number of years, but nonetheless, there is. And that could change, those patterns could change, you know, depending on what happens with Maple Leaf, those lands, that could change entirely in the future. So in that aspect, why should we not take a larger perspective, a wider perspective, versus as to the concerns that are only being outlined by the residents on the street itself? As an accessibility issue?
Yeah. Well, our neighborhood is probably in the 80-year range. We've existed with the single sidewalk on each side all this time. We do have a large age range that are in our area, and a lot of those people who are in the higher age range have been there since the 60s. They're the ones that said no to the sidewalk. They do not see it as an issue for themselves.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Glenn Graham.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. Terry, thank you for your presentation. You'd mentioned trees before, and you had had some pictures, but do you have anything that can help us understand the impact to the neighborhood?
Yeah, I wanted to actually have pictures projected, but I told I didn't realize the time delays. So I actually have printed versions I brought with me, if anybody wants to look at them.
What we could do is, that's for amphiphor purposes and so on, but we could circulate it around the council, so if, you could just get those and have council take a look at them.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I only printed off one copy because I don't like to waste.
No, I appreciate that.
So those pictures there show the Ohio Buckeyes that were referred to in the report as being inferior, never going to mature, not healthy. As you can see in the pictures, they look very nice in the summertime. They are very healthy. And we will lose all five of those trees down that side. There's also other trees that are larger and mature on my property and my neighbor's property, who happens, I have two of the neighbors here as well. And because they're so mature in their root growth, putting a sidewalk in is going to endanger these healthy, mature trees. That's just on Kennedy. On Palmer, there is an overhead view, unfortunately, it's done in the wintertime in the report. And in that report, you can see how many trees will be affected. And we want to have our cover. We need the trees to provide oxygen in our environment.
My next question, Terry, because I'm on the clock here, I just want to keep it rolling, is in terms of the number of people walking in the neighborhood and also, you know, using buggies and that kind of thing, and people with wheelchairs. Anecdotally, can you give us a sense of how busy, you talked about the cars not being busy, but how many pedestrians are traveling around that area? Do you have a sense of that?
Just offhand, in the summertime, there are, I will see people walking around with the strollers, the one young family down the street, as well as on Palmer. We also have people in our neighborhood that work close by. They walk to work or bike to work. Myself, I'm lucky, my office is at home. However, there's an e-bike involved, and my e-bike gets me to the market downtown and places like that. So we do take advantage of what's there now, but we don't see the need of spending that $35,000 and killing trees to put in a sidewalk that the majority of us do not wish to have in our neighborhood.
Appreciate that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions still at Counselor Fernandez?
Actually, a question of staff.
Okay. Any other questions for the delegation? Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Thank you very much, Ross.
Thank you.
Counselor Benavich, question of staff, and then I'll go to Counselor Etherington.
Yeah, and I'm not sure Mr. Currie can respond to it. As I look at the pictures, there are some trees that are potentially in close proximity. Just to be absolutely clear, so the sidewalk here that's being contemplated would not have a boulevard or it would have a boulevard associated with it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If you could just clarify which street you were talking about there, Palmer or Kennedy?
Where we're proposing to put the additional sidewalk, are we looking at putting a boulevard there or not?
On both sections where we're putting a sidewalk, yes, there will be a boulevard as well.
Okay. So could we minimize impact potentially on trees by either going with a smaller boulevard or no boulevard at all?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. In the case of Kennedy, even a small boulevard will be in conflict. The sidewalk will still be in conflict with the five trees in question, so those will have to be removed.
What about no boulevard?
Same with no boulevard. Any sidewalk on Kennedy in that area will affect those trees.
Okay. On the other street?
Palmer, there are no trees slated to be removed.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any more questions for staff or council, for staff rather? Okay, seeing none. Before comments, we'll get the motion on the floor. This is Counselor Agnides. Well, we have to bring forward the, this is from the committee. We have to bring forward the committee recommendation. So this is item number five. Excuse me, just, I'm being reminded of something. You're right. Actually, there was no recommendation from the committee that the issue was simply deferred to this council meeting. So you're absolutely correct. There is no particular motion. And in that case, I will go to Counselor Etherington.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I've got a motion typed out here. Must be a first.
Did you have it ahead of time? It would have been good to have it circulated ahead of time. That's the real protocol.
I just can't win tonight.
It's typed. That is progress.
I also had some comments, Mr. Mayor.
You can bring forward a motion first and then get a second, and then you can make comments.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Speaking as the ward counselor for the residents on Kennedy and Palmer, I feel the same way about this issue as I did on the one we dealt with recently.
Excuse me, Counselor Etherington, I'm sorry. There's a motion here. You're moving the motions in front of us?
Yes.
Okay. Have to let some people read it and find out if there's a second or four before the comments.
I thought Paul.
I didn't see, okay, Counselor Singh. Then I'm just trying to be procedurally correct. Okay, go ahead.
I'll spare you the first part again. I feel the same way about this issue as I did about the people living on Glasgow who did not want a sidewalk out their homes, outside their homes. And I've always been satisfied with sidewalks on one side of the roads. I cannot justify spending tens of thousands of dollars on sidewalks that in the eyes of the experts, those are the people to me living on the two streets, will destroy trees, shorten driveways, and be otherwise detrimental to their well-established neighborhood. We can see from the figures that have been given to us, there's an overwhelming majority who don't want sidewalks. And that's not to say I'm against sidewalks. There are very busy streets in my ward that have no sidewalks, and that creates an ongoing dangerous situation. I pointed out without success several of these streets and locations, but seen no move to rectify those situations. I believe we should spend the Kennedy, Palmer, Glasgow cash on those sidewalks, the ones that are most needed. And if ever they appear, I'll be glad to support those proposals. So for that reason, I would propose that the motion in front of me. Thank you.
Comments? Okay, there are, yes, there is. Counselor Fernandez?
Yes, I will support this motion. I think it is very similar to where we were on Glasgow Street. And again, we talk about community engagement and public engagement. And if there was absolutely no sidewalk on this street, I think I would be very reluctant to support that. But there is a sidewalk, there is a connection point. And yes, true, the traffic patterns today may be less than they were in the past, and they may change. But again, had there been no sidewalk, I think my viewpoint would have been different. But there is a sidewalk, and we're spending money, $35,000 doesn't sound like an awful lot, but if it can be used on a street that has no sidewalks, that is much busier, then I don't see why we wouldn't want to do that. That seems more prudent and more helpful to the citizens of those streets than in this situation. So I will be supporting this. I think it really speaks to what the public is asking us and how they're asking us to listen to them.
Counselor Benavich.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I regretfully won't be supporting the motion that's before us. And I struggle in that regard because there clearly is a certain view by the residents on this street. However, I think we need to keep in mind that we do have some fundamental principles that exist within our city. One is obviously the issue of the pedestrian charter, which was put in place, which encourages the placement of these sidewalks in all residential areas. Secondly, as a representative on GRAC, I feel it's important to recognize the role and the view of the committee where I sit as council's representative, which is to ensure that all streets within the city of Kitchener ultimately do have sidewalks, all residential streets in particular, and other areas have sidewalks available to facilitate the movement of people. I think in the end, it adds to the walkability of close-knit neighborhoods. It adds to pedestrian safety and traffic safety, which we know is a big concern by our residents as per the recent poll in, done by Environix for Compass Kitchener. And as such, I think that that is the way that we should be going. And, you know, if we're going to start straying from that more, I think we need to have a broader conversation with the community around the principles and the policies that we already have in place as a city, around walkability, around pedestrian charter, and around ensuring that all residents of the city, including those with accessibility challenges, have the access that they're looking for.
Counselor Glenn Graham.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I agree. I think we need to have that broader discussion because while there's principles in place for good reason for the pedestrian charter, there are guidelines, and we do need to look at the individual circumstances. We have sidewalks in place in these streets, and they are internal streets. They're not major thoroughfare streets. While there might be development in the Schneider's lands, I believe that it's true that these will not be streets, that will be overflow streets because of that. I think we need to look at this holistically, and while I respect GRAC and the great work they do, I do think that we need to look at this as an opportunity to say, let's continue the good work of the environment, keeping the trees and keeping the sidewalks that we do have in good repair, looking at the actual responses from the citizens in that area. I think that's really important. They have, Mr. Ross has spent a lot of time, and we do have feedback from them overwhelmingly. And just beyond that, I do think that the city should support walkability, but I don't think it necessarily means we need to put sidewalks in on every turn if there's sidewalks existing. So I won't be, I will support the idea that there's no sidewalks, the current motion on the table by Counselor Etherington.
Counselor Singh.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I came to this, you know, fairly difficult decision, primarily because I see the importance of taking opportunity of broadening and bettering our infrastructure. When we talk about costs, yes, they are a front cost now, but if you were to have to do it down the road, it would cost far more. But at the, ultimately, I try to put more weight on public input. And it's apparent that the overwhelming support on the, from the residents on the street is that they do not want it. And similar to the earlier comments, had there not been a sidewalk on the other side, I would absolutely think that this would be necessitated. But I think this is something that we can forego, especially taking a look at those pictures. I was on a different mindset today, voting differently, but when I saw the pictures and seeing with the effect that it would have on the trees. And that adds additional cost because those trees are an investment as well. They are mature trees and would take time for new trees that are planted before they come to the same level of tree canopy. So I think we have to preserve that investment. And for that reason alone, I will support Counselor Etherington's motion.
Thank you. I'll just brief the comment. I think that our policies that we've had in place for some time now related to the pedestrian charter and the, it is in relationship to the comments from GRAC, I think we have to be very careful that for both of those sorts of things, that we don't just give lip service to those policies. They're there for a reason. And the, it's just not a matter of saying, well, we're going to save it here, let's put it onto another street. The only reason that this is here at this point in time is because of the reconstruction which is going on. That's the only time that these sorts of things are basically coming up unless it is an emergency situation. So we have to be careful as members of council not to confuse those two things of how they get here. I think we are in danger of setting precedence that whenever there is some pushback from the neighborhood, and I respectfully understand that. However, we have a greater responsibility, I believe, so that I would not be able to support the removal of the sidewalks from the works that are going to be going on on those streets. Counselor Davy?
Just wanted to give staff a heads up. Should this motion fail, actually, I would like have one extra question.
All right. Actually, looking at the motion as it is, we would not normally be, we're not approving the first part of the construction because that's already been in the capital budget, and it will come back within the tender, I believe. So that first part would be redundant, I would suggest. But that, I would say, in relationship to the Kennedy and Palmer Avenue reconstruction project, the installation of sidewalks on the north side of Kennedy be removed and not form part of this project. That would be the type of wording. Okay, with that understanding, recorded vote has been called for. You may now vote. The motion is, those in favor, rather. Those opposed? The motion is lost. Counselor Davy?
Thank you. Just to follow quickly from Counselor Benavich's questioning in the hope of possible compromise, can staff quickly outline, number one, if it alleviates any other concerns of the residents if the sidewalk were to be curb-facing, and is the proposed sidewalk with the minimum width allowable?
Steve?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The curb face, as I stated, the curb-face sidewalk on Kennedy would not save the five trees that are proposed to be removed?
Yes, but there was also some concern about shortening of driveway. Lex?
Yeah. The questions, the answer's a little more complicated. If we go curb-face, the standard width is 1.8 meters. If there's a boulevard, the standard width is 1.5. So yeah, going to a curb-face sidewalk will generally save some space there, but not as much as just going straight curb-face. So the short answer is, yeah, it would save a little bit of space.
Is there any, other than, obviously, there'd be implications with snow, but are there any other negative implications with going with a curb-face sidewalk?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. None that I can think of. Snow storage is a common concern with curb-face, but other than that, that would be the only one.
I'm hesitant to move the motion because I haven't been as close to this as the ward counselor, but just in the interest of compromise, if that motion were to come forward, if the ward counselor thought that curb-facing sidewalks would be better than sidewalks with a boulevard, I would be in support of that.
In the absence, just for procedural here, in the absence of any motion, the project will go forward with the sidewalks because that's the way it is currently. It was given to council as information as part of the reconstruction project. Sir, we've dealt with the matter.
I'm one of the residents on the street. I have a huge tree on my front porch. Are you guys going to guarantee me in 10 years I won't die? If you do, are you prepared to take it down and replace it?
Sir, we're beyond the delegation period. I'm sorry. We understand the concern, but we're beyond that point. Counselor Benavich?
The other counsel?
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me. We're not dealing with delegations any further on this matter. Counselor Benavich?
Thank you. Just, I guess, one question further with respect to the issue of snow. And I mean, I'm inclined, if we can minimize the impact, to do what Counselor Davy is suggesting and look at curb-face. But I'm just wondering if staff can talk about what the issues are with that, and is that something that, you know, we need to give some consideration to the residents on, particularly in terms of how do we handle it right now? Because I know this has been an issue of contention in parts of my ward where we have curb-face sidewalk, and what role the city does or doesn't play in certain spots around cleaning that sidewalk.
Yeah. Excuse me. Through you, Mr. Mayor. The issue with curb-face sidewalk and snow removal is really one of its proximity to the roadway, and snowplow operations on the roadway often push snow onto the sidewalk. Then the resident who is responsible for shoveling the sidewalk throws it back, and it's sort of a back and forth. So we like to have that boulevard there just to give that area where snow can be kept without the conflict between the snowplow and home removal.
Okay. And maybe just one other question. With respect to the project that you're doing it, that you're doing as it's proposed right now, is there some additional plantings that you're considering as part of this when sidewalk goes in?
Absolutely. Through you, Mr. Mayor. As with all these projects, we try and put as many trees back as we remove. So on Kennedy, for example, I believe there's seven trees going back in for the five that would be removed.
And these are trees of some substance?
They're the usual size, which is as big as we put in to ensure that they grow healthily. Some of the, if the larger tree you put in, the harder it is to get established. Younger trees tend to grow more vigorously.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Fernandez?
Just a quick point. The issue of a curb-facing sidewalk, I've seen that discussion when we were dealing with Old Mill Road, and my residents lost substantial amount of frontage. It has been a real problem this year for those residents. They have nowhere to put the snow. And, I mean, they're, it's becoming a problem as they back out of their driveways, which is even with houses that have boulevards. So I have a real big concern with us even doing something like that.
Okay. As I said, in the absence of anything else coming forward, the construction will proceed as was planned. Okay? I see nothing else. I know this does not please you. I know this is not what you came for, but the decision has been made on that matter.
Mr. Mayor, may I address the council briefly?
No, not on that subject, because we have dealt with the matter.
No, you don't.
We'll go on to the next delegation. We'll go on to the next delegation. Jim Parrott. This is regarding the notice of motion put forward by Counselor Etherington. This would be the item 8B on our agenda, the flag policy. Mr. Parrott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillors, my name is Jim Parrott. I've lived in Kitchener, Waterloo for 44 years now, and in the last 43 years, I have been working actively in the gay, lesbian, bisexual, trans, and queer communities of Waterloo region. In the past three years, I've also been documenting the history of the LGBTQ community. The good news is that there has been extraordinary advances in legislation promoting equality for the LGBTQ community. Most of those changes have, in fact, happened between the years 1995 and 2005. There have also been significant improvements in societal attitudes towards acceptance of and respect for diversity in Waterloo region. The bad news is that these changes have done little to affect the lives of some members of the LGBTQ community. For many of these people, they might as well be living 40 years ago. My husband, William, and I lead lives that are relatively free of harassment. We live openly as gay people. We walk hand-in-hand when we are out walking on the street. But sadly, as part of my community work, I often speak with people for whom life in Waterloo region is very different. I speak with youth who have been bullied in schools. I speak with youth who have attempted to take their lives because of that bullying. I speak with young and middle-aged adults who are afraid to be out in their jobs and much less doing something like walking hand-in-hand with the person they love. And I speak to people of my age, I'm 70 years old, who are very much wondering that when they come to rely -- whether they will have to go back into the closet when they come to rely on things like home care or if they have to move into a retirement home. People's circumstances vary so very greatly. A gesture like flying the rainbow flag may seem like a matter of little consequence to many people, but to some people, it is a gesture that affirms that we live in a community that accepts diversity and is committed to the goal of promoting a kinder and safer environment for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for the delegation? Yes, there is one. Counselor Singh?
Yes, thank you, and thank you for your, you know, coming forward as a delegation and speaking to a matter that, you know, that's close to heart and important to you. And it's, I agree with most of what everything you've said. My question would be, where the city of Kitchener took steps to stand in solidarity, especially to what was happening during the Olympics, do you think that effort speaks to the same sentiment, you know, having the rainbow flag on the cube, which wide visibility, which stood that the city hall was in support of the LGBTQ community? Why only the flag post? Can the sentiment not, the support not be shown in various other ways? Why does it only have to be through the pole? The flag being flown on the pole?
We're not speaking about it being only on the flagpole. The steps that were taken, I think, were very much welcomed by the LGBTQ community and are a very good first step forward. And given the short timeframe that we were working on with SOCHI, it was wonderful that this happened. But I'm speaking to something that's further in the future, the idea that at certain times of the year, for example, pride celebrations, it might be possible to have a flagpole that could display something like the rainbow flag. I believe that is the spirit of Counselor Etherington's motion.
Good, and I wanted to take your perspective that the efforts that the city hall did take, that they were, you know, in your mind, they were far-reaching enough, and so...
They were a very good first step.
Perfect, thank you.
Counselor Etherington?
Thanks for coming in, Mr. Parrott. Could you tell me what's your knowledge of other municipalities who do have a flagpole to fly whatever flag, your flag, any other flag? Are you aware of other municipalities that have that?
I'm afraid I didn't come armed with a lot of detail. I do know that more than 30 municipalities in Canada have chosen to fly the rainbow flag for SOCHI, and this includes very large cities such as Vancouver and Montreal, and also smaller ones like Guelph. If the intent of your question was to ask how it was this, was the intent to ask how this was achieved, Counselor Etherington?
Yeah.
I can only guess. I would have to imagine that many of these places have proclamation bans or protocols in place, but they also have exception clauses. That would be my guess.
Thank you.
Counselor Vrbanovic?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much for coming in tonight, sir, and sharing with us your thoughts on this issue. As we go forward and we look at this, do you have any particular views on whether or not, like the motion as it speaks right now talks specifically about flagpoles in Civic Square? There was a time, for example, when the city did have a community flagpole. At that time, it happened to be in Rockway Gardens, as an example. Do you have any particular views around where it is, or do you believe that the important thing is that there is a noted community flagpole for this kind of thing?
I will speak only for myself. My feeling is, if there were a flagpole for that purpose, the best place for it would be the most visible place. And if one thinks of the plaza in front of Kitchener City Hall as a kind of city plaza, something that is an important part in the city, I would think that would be probably the ideal place. Again, I'm speaking for myself.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Counselor Fernandez?
Thank you. Thanks for coming in and bringing us your perspective. One of the things that I'm a little bit concerned about is that as we open the door to allowing flags to be flown in the community space, that we may run into some challenges from other community groups that may, we may have less of an appetite to fly a flag. Do you see that as a concern if you're looking at the whole picture and what may happen?
I understand what you're saying. I understand you're referring to the slippery slope argument. And I would suggest that councillors consider the fact that so many municipalities have been able to negotiate this problem. Again, I don't know exactly how they've all done it, but I would assume that the intent of the motion before us is to have this problem being studied. Am I wrong? Yes. It's simply to have people go away and look at it, and obviously, one of the parts of that study would be gathering that kind of information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
There are no further questions. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Etherington, you wish to bring forward the notice of motion that you gave earlier. Hang on a second. I just forgot to put your microphone on. Okay, go ahead.
I noticed last night that the wording, and I know your feelings on wording, the last paragraph needs some words changed, and I have that here. Can I give this to the clerk?
Okay.
So could I speak to the motion, Mr. Chair?
Yeah. Just hang on a second.
Yeah.
Is there a second for the motion? Counselor Glenn Graham? Okay, go ahead. Counselor Etherington?
First of all, I would refer councillors to a letter that was circulated from the Waterloo Region Rainbow Coalition, which is in front of councillors, because they're not here this evening to speak. So my comments outside city hall, we've got eight huge flagpoles and five smaller flags flying from the city hall balcony. We also have an outdated legalistic protocol that prevents any community group or association flying an appropriate and acceptable flag. That protocol was introduced almost 20 years ago, and much has changed in our society during the past two decades, particularly in relation to inclusiveness. During that time, as you've heard, numerous other municipalities have managed to quietly introduce policies that designate a flagpole for community use. The policies of those cities include legal, workable ways to screen, and if necessary, prevent objectionable or frivolous flags from flying. Meanwhile, in Kitchener, instead of updating and adopting a more enlightened policy, we've hidden behind our protocol. For that reason, we were recently caught in, in my opinion, a very embarrassing ongoing farce where council refused to even discuss flying the rainbow flag during the Winter Olympics, and then did a number of other things. If we had made an exception to our protocol and loosened our red tape, I think we could have quietly illustrated Kitchener's support for gay athletes in the Olympics, and at the same time protested Russia's discriminatory anti-gay laws. I think, again, in my opinion, we fumbled that issue. We put a very sad and small rainbow flag in the rotunda and eventually moved the important topic up to the cube on top of city hall. In my opinion, neither of those options indicated our city's efforts to be inclusive, and neither indicated municipal support for gay athletes. Mr. Mayor, we're a city that takes so much pride and goes to huge lengths to boost efforts that help us continue to be Canada's cutting-edge high-tech hub, and I think we should make the same effort to update community attitudes and match those technological advances to our advancing attitudes. I would go one step further and suggest that unless we do so, we'll be at risk of blunting that cutting edge elsewhere in the community. I'm asking for council's support for this motion, which in a small, symbolic way could lead to a situation where we show municipal support for appropriate groups of taxpayers by allowing them to fly flags on a designated flagpole in front of city hall. The motion does nothing more than have staff review other municipalities to see how they have avoided what we've seen referred to as the flag flap. Thank you.
Counselor Galloway-Seelock?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask that we take the last paragraph in two pieces, that the first piece end at "flag policy," period, and then the second piece be voted on separately, and I'll explain why. I have absolutely no problem looking at the policy, but I would like to see a report before I am able to come back and definitively say that there is, definitively say that we should be looking at requests from the community. I think I want to, as I stated the last time we were going to talk about this, that we need to understand the history and why we are here and why it was first put in place. So I think that that report is important, and I wouldn't want to make any assumptions now that this is potentially the appropriate way to go. I have no problem, I want to look at it holistically and not just this one piece, so that we can look at it in the long term for not what's just right for right now, but what's right for the long term. I think it's a bigger issue than just supporting the flying of the rainbow flag, which is a byproduct of what this potentially could do, but I don't want this report to have any assumptions made with it. I'd rather just say, staff, let's go back, let's look at the policy in a comprehensive manner, and the second part of that may come out as, yes, let's look at the opportunity to govern requests, but I don't want to vote for that piece, rather just to look at staff undertaking a policy review.
Counselor Vrbanovic?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and I had a slight amendment to this that I didn't type out because I believed it was small in nature and consistent with the original motion, and partially speaks to what Counselor Galloway-Seelock was talking about, and that's getting to and report back with a possible framework as opposed to a framework, because the current wording, I think, as Counselor Galloway-Seelock indicated, basically presupposes a conclusion. And then on the end of "for the outside poles in Civic Square," I've added "or other appropriately located highly visible community flagpole location." And if I can briefly speak to this, Mr. Mayor, and I'm not sure if those are, I know we're not sort of doing friendly ones, so if that has to be an amendment, so be it. The history of this goes back to a time when two things were happening. Number one, in the city of London, we had a mayor who was refusing to do a proclamation on, it was around LGBTQ issues or Pride Day. I can't remember all the details exactly. It was appealed to the Supreme Court. The city lost. The mayor still refused to do it, and I can't remember exactly how it all ended at the time. At the same time, there were issues that were developing in cities like Toronto and others during the war in the former Yugoslavia, in cities where different places wanted to raise flags, and there was physical conflicts erupting in those particular situations. So that's why many cities at the time actually moved away from doing both of those things. In the intervening 20 years, obviously, things have changed, and some have reintroduced both proclamations and flags on a community or city flagpole. And I think after 20 years timeframe, it's appropriate for us to be doing this review, to look at why things have changed in some cities. How are they dealing with the concerns around, how do you say yes to some groups, and how do we say no and deal with ones that potentially are offensive? Sure, we can fall, you know, we can fall back on the human rights law as one way of dealing with it, but then there's a whole bunch of gray areas, and how do we deal with those as a community? Because fundamentally, at the end of the day, in my view, and I would like to see some sort of community flagpole, but in my view, whatever we do needs to be something that brings our community together and doesn't divide our community. It should be something that brings strength to our community and not create additional conflict. That's why I think we need to take some time and some due diligence around this to make sure we do it properly. And to that note, I guess my question to staff would be, because this is the first time I'm seeing a date in the motion, is May 12th a reasonable date to be able to do that examination of consulting with other communities as well as for legal to have a look at it, because it's going to involve both those issues?
Okay, and I think we'll try to get an answer on that one now, because I had a question on that as well. Mr. Wilmer?
Through the merit to Counselor Vrbanovic. I think, yes, that gives us a couple of months, and we will, we can bring back that sort of high-level report in May if council's direction at that time is to send it back for further detail on how it would be implemented. We would still have time to do that, a little bit of time anyway, before the summer break. But I think there is an advantage to coming back in early May, because it may not be the last time council deals with it, and we probably can't deal with it really effectively after July 1st.
Okay, well, that's encouraging to hear that. The second question, just because obviously we know that the Pride Festival's coming up, I think, in July?
No.
When?
Would be the end of May, beginning of June, I think.
May 30th to June 7.
Okay. So in light of that, is it my understanding from questions I've asked previously, that our banner policy in terms of the street banners in front of King Street would allow the rainbow banner to fly on those streetlight banners? It's my understanding previously that that, in fact, would be permitted, consistent with the festival nature of events and so on that we do?
Through the merit, yes, I believe that is the case.
Okay, so in light of that, I think, you know, that's something that staff can work on with the LGBT community, particularly in regards to that May event, so we know that that's covered off, and in the meantime, we can deal with this broader policy in the May timeframe. And again, I have those suggested amendments.
Counselor Glenn Graham?
Thank you very much. You know, we should all get behind this. This is a process-related type of amendment, and... This is a process-related type of amendment, and we are a proud community that talks about being welcoming of diversity. We had Compass Kitchener here earlier today talking about belonging. You know, it's really important for us to include people. This is about positive celebration of all people and including people that feel that they have not been included in the past. And, you know, I think the question has been asked, how do we do this? And it occurred to me when I was looking at the municipal advertising policy that Mr. Mayor brought before us in 107, that the Canadian Code of Advertising Standards that I have before me talks about a lot of things that would not condone personal discrimination based upon race, national origin, religion, sex, or age, and it goes into greater detail. I think we have the answer before us. It's really very straightforward. Other municipalities have been successful. We do need to look seriously at that. I do support the idea of doing something for Tri-Pride. I think that's great. But it has to be not just at nighttime, the cube is a great step, but that's at night. We need to be, seem to be doing something for people that are celebrating during the day as well. So I think that this is a good step forward, and we should all be supportive of it.
Counselor Davy.
Thank you. I want to start by thanking the delegate for coming in. I thought that was a very courageous presentation. I supported the waving of the notice of motion because I thought this was a one-time opportunity to show some solidarity. And now I think it's getting blown out of proportion. As we've heard, there hasn't been a concern about this issue for many, many years, and I think that there was a fantastic window during the Olympic Games that we should have flown the rainbow flag. But again, this is a one-in-10-year, one-in-15-year type of event, and trying to create policy for one-in-10-year, one-in-15-year type events, in my opinion, is folly. It's not a good use of resources. Sometimes there needs to be exceptions. There should have been an exception, and if, you know, we should have flown the flag at that time, but to go back and have staff take away from the several other things they're working on in the hopes of trying to somehow wordsmith these very rare exceptions, I think, isn't, just isn't a good use of our time. I think that council needs to be more responsive and realize that policy, policy is not set in stone. Policy is a guideline. When somebody, someone comes up again with a perfectly reasonable solution in the future, it's within this council's power to override that policy, to waive it, to fly whatever flag we so choose. But I think to start opening up to all sorts of different potentials, and the slippery-slope argument is valid. I mean, do we go back now and look at the Ukraine situation? This is not the purview of this council, nor should it be. So I, like, those are my comments, and I'll let them stay as they are, but I will not be supporting any sort of review.
Okay, I have no further comments. I'll just make a couple of brief ones. I do not feel that we made an error. There was confusion over the, what was being said by various parties. However, I believe that through a lot of discussion, we came to a good solution. I wouldn't even call it a compromise. It was a good solution under the circumstances. The issue here, and it was raised by Counselor Fernandez in terms of, in one of the questions, this is not about any one particular organization, and individual members of council, the mayor, the city, could be, could be held liable under potential litigation if we had a policy, which, as we now state, and we started making exceptions to it. So in terms of doing a review, I don't have a problem in doing the review. What I am concerned about is that all of the four "whereas's" essentially reference it to the rainbow flag and Tri-Pride, which is what has triggered this, but it's not about that. The one delegation we had this evening was related to that, there's no question about it. But as Counselor Davy just said, and I had written it down earlier on, God forbid a major problem to happen in the Ukraine beyond what is already a big problem, but that could be a request to show solidarity for the people of the Ukraine. We did have it, as Counselor Banevich said, earlier on in different era. I do believe it is a slippery slope. However, I do not have a problem in reviewing the flag policy. But prior to this change, first of all, that we've heard, understood the date that it's possible, but I could not support this resolution that is in front of us as it is now, because it is prescriptive, and it presupposes that there will be a change to the policy to allow flagpoles. As the suggestion of Counselor Banevich, in terms of with a possible framework to govern, et cetera, would be okay with me. But I do not want to make policy on the fly without background information, and this resolution here does exactly that. So we'll now go back to, I see, Counselor Banevich, you're up. Is this for an amendment to the motion?
Yes. Just a few more.
Just a second.
Okay. So just to read it clearly, it would read, "Therefore, be it resolved that staff be directed to undertake a review of council policy I-442 flag policy and report back with a possible framework to govern requests received from the community for flag raisings on the outside poles in Civic Square or other appropriately located, highly visible, community flagpole location."
You admitted the May 12th. Did you mean?
Sorry, I meant, yeah, leave the May 12th in there. Sorry about that. And Mr. Mayor, there's one point I forgot to make earlier, and I just could, and the reason I talk about other possible location is, there was a time, actually up until the building of this City Hall, that the community flagpole location was at Rockway Gardens, and then the intent was actually to move it, and for a short period of time, I think it actually was, on one of the five flagpoles in the Duke and Young Street Garden that are there that fly city flags. And it was when the decision was made to not fly flags anymore that that then stopped at that location. I partially know about that is because I was involved in the Croatian community, and they used to fly one every year on an annual basis. So I mean, I have some knowledge of that from the past.
Okay. There's an amendment, there's a second for the amendment. Counselor Galloway-Seelock. Are we clear on the amendment? Those in favor of the amendment? Recorded votes have been called for. This is on the amendment only. To be added in the words with "possible," "a possible framework," and "the end." Okay, I'm sorry, I missed it. Okay, those in favor? Opposed? The motion, the amendment carries. Now, the amended motion. Ready for a vote? Those in favor? Oh, sorry, we're not standing. You can now vote. I'll call for the standing vote in a moment. Those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you for coming, gentlemen. Okay, our last delegation is Harold Drewitz, and this is regarding the other notice of motion from Counselor Etherington.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counselors. I'm here to speak in favor of Counselor Etherington's motion regarding Victoria Park statue project, which reads that the city should end any further consideration on this project. As I read more than once in media articles, several counselors and staff members were surprised about the large numbers of the public that took part in the statue survey, as well as the results that showed a resounding, 80% of the responses voted against this project. Yes, we agree, as a city within this great country, that the city should undertake some means of commemorating the 150th anniversary, but not this project, and certainly not something with ongoing and never-ending costs. We suggest the people who started this idea should really take this to the appropriate minister in Ottawa, and perhaps the federal department can review the project. We suggest statues of national significance really belong in Ottawa, and yes, more school field trips should be taken to Ottawa in order that our students can see many facets of what our nation's capital offers, and as so often is said by you counselors, a holistic approach and see what's going on in Ottawa. The resounding no is mainly due to all of these statues being placed in a relatively small park in comparison to parks in other major national centers, and the prime consideration was that this project represents too great a cost for the citizens of Kitchener, both in its initial contribution as well as ongoing maintenance and future building requirements. A heritage impact study nor any other type of study or any further consideration by staff or council will not have any other result. Counselor Etherington is correct. Not one more minute of staff's limited available time should be wasted on this project, and I heard about limited available time the staff has several times this evening. With all the concern around this table that was stated during the recent budget process on the use of staff's time, we don't understand why you counselors would not welcome a very clear, decisive answer from the public you represent and have staff move on to more necessary and meaningful projects such as the Strasbourg Road Study, which is in line with activities the city should be undertaking and directing resources towards. Also, Mr. Mayor, you were in Ottawa last week at the Big Cities Mayor's meeting, and as you said during your interview on February 4th, infrastructure is a major issue. You are absolutely correct. Let's not spend on nice-to-have things, but instead focus staff and council on what the citizens of Kitchener need their tax dollars spent on.
Thank you very much. There may be some questions. Counselor Singh.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Drewitz, I'm a little confused in your last paragraph. You are insinuating why, that you don't understand why us counselors would not welcome a very clear decisive answer. Where did you come to that understanding? I don't think anyone's come out overly to say that we, or us, oppose the opinion that was given to us by the public. I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you're getting from that, so.
Well, I obviously listen to the news on TV. I read reports, and I understand from some of you that you want to spend further time, and you want staff to spend further time, and I'm saying by, or we are saying, by having an overwhelming response of approximately 2,500 people, approximately 2,000 said no to the project, why waste any more time?
I agree.
Have you read the 31 pages of the responses?
Mr. Drewitz, I agree with you absolutely that no more further time needs to be spent, but I read the same news as you do too, and I didn't get any, you know, any clarity that there was any opposition to, you know, finally come to a decision and prolong this any further. So I'm kind of confused with that statement, but anyways, I'm sure, I wanted to make sure that that was clarified. So thank you.
Counselor Fernandez.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification, Mr. Drewitz. When you're talking about the Strasbourg Road Study, because that's been my passion for a long time, I just wanted to understand what exactly you meant by that.
I know that, I don't know that, I know that there's ongoing work that needs to be done on the Strasbourg Road Study, and I don't know what departments are all involved. I don't, I'm not, don't sit on that side of the desk, and, but, you know, there's a, for, the Strasbourg Road Study was just a for example.
Oh, okay, okay. So really, I think what I'm understanding and taking from you here is not just the Strasbourg Road, but all infrastructure projects that require tax dollars to be put towards that.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, there are no more questions. Thank you very much. Counselor Etherington. Want to bring forward the motion?
Yeah, I bring through, I bring forward the motion as it stands in our agenda, and I had some comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and seconded by Counselor Singh. Go ahead, Counselor Etherington.
Looking at the long list of comments and the opinions expressed in our statue survey by voters in all of our wards, I would suggest we've got 1,920 good reasons for counselors to support this motion. And for those who lean towards suggesting this is an unbalanced response from a small portion of our population, I would note that I'm unaware of ever seeing almost 2,441 people responding to any of our surveys, and this involves a higher response than we even received on the question of whether to bring a casino to Kitchener or not. For those who would ignore such a response, I would point out that tonight we reviewed a report on voter turnout that showed Kitchener as one of the lowest in Ontario, 28.5%. The authors of that report suggested that voter cynicism on what the report calls a democratic deficit is linked to examples like the statue project. That's where we request public comment, we get public opinion, and then we drag our heels for weeks and display such a lack of respect and urgency to consider an overwhelming public response to the $2 million statue proposal to erect 22 bronze statues of former prime ministers in the park, Victoria Park. I would also direct attention to the fact that counselors have reviewed and supported an extensive report that outlined how we should establish open, transparent government. The report and a survey asked voters how they prefer to communicate with council, and the responses showed their preferences for the type of public survey we did on the statues. Now, if we take a moment to consider how those 2,441 voters will feel if you ignore their wishes and support this project, the 1920 people who were against the statues circling the common area in front of Victoria Park's clock tower represent 79% of the total respondents. In addition, 78% of respondents said very clearly they do not want this council to spend $300,000 to construct the basis for the statues and then invest more taxpayer cash to landscape the sites and clean up the predictable vandalism. Many voters also said they do not want to see the statues anywhere in Kitchener, but because this council has little to no control over privately-owned land or sites owned by other levels of government, this statistic is not listed in my motion. That point was made by the mayor, so I changed that motion. Anyone who wants to see the thoughtful, passionate reasons to reject statues should read the 67 pages of negative comments from all those voters. They agree that if we allowed the statues to be built, it would be, and I'm quoting They agree that if we allowed the statues to be built, it would be, and I'm quoting, "an inappropriate, uninspired, ugly clutter in our beautiful park." In an effort to show respect for the promoters of the project, I will spare you some of the more blunt and passionate voter responses to the statue proposal. So I would ask for council's support for the statue motion. Thank you.
Councillor Galloway-Seelock.
Very briefly, the numbers speak volumes, and the public has spoken, therefore I don't need to. I support the motion.
Councillor Singh.
Yes, thank you. If ever we've had a more clear mandate, I think this is, this is it. We've spent enough time to engage in this proposal. This is the reason why earlier I did not support us looking at a master plan, because it was quite evident through public engagement dialogue that this was the direction that the public was going. The response is that this is not something that would be welcomed in the community or is a need. I think we have priorities that are far more pressing, that any dollars need to be dedicated to there, so based on the overwhelming public response and my own personal opinion of this project, I will not support, and I'm glad to see this finally to an end.
Councillor Glenn Graham.
Thank you. I think that we need to thank the people that brought this forward and for this debate, because it does highlight the fact that we do appreciate leadership from the community and the grassroots, so we should say yes to the kind of leadership that the citizens have shown here, the willingness to step up and fund this really from their own pockets. So I would say yes to them, unfortunately no to this project. I don't think it's the right project to demonstrate leadership, and it's probably not the right spot to do it. However, we should continue to work with people that do want to show this kind of leadership, so I would encourage groups like this to continue to work with our staff to see if there's any other potential visions that they have that would celebrate local leaders, diversity, women, and things that people can get behind. I think that public art is wonderful, so we should say yes to that, we could use more of that, but no to this project at this time, and I do thank them for their efforts.
Councillor Vravenevich.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I too am very appreciative of the work that the citizens that brought this forward did in terms of this project, and I see one of them in the audience this evening. Clearly, our citizens spoke very clearly on this issue, and they've indicated that they don't see a match between the community's desires and the desires of these particular citizens in seeing this project continue in Victoria Park. It saddens me in a way that, quite frankly, some people, including people around this horseshoe, made this a much more negative issue than it needed to be. However, that, that's just part of the reality, I guess, of the political process. In the end, I think what matters here is that the citizens were clear, and we need to respect that in our decision going forward.
Councillor Ainaitis.
It's pretty obvious the public has spoken, and I will support the motion, but I think, I just want to make a comment on, I think the group that was responsible for bringing this forward to us, we're doing a lot of good work for the community, and I think bringing this motion forward, I think is pretty well indecent by us, I think, and I think it's going to discourage others who want to come and help the community, and we come here and we kind of, you know, laugh at this, and, you know, like, they actually put some work into it, but again, the public did speak about it, and I do want to thank the proponents. I think it was, I think they had a good vision, and I think they, they had something that they, that obviously the public didn't want, and we do have to respect that.
Is there no more comments? I'll make some. Everyone around this horseshoe from time to time talks about process, and in fact, process is almost the byword of making decisions. And this process was hijacked, so shame on us. The process was to have the information and get public input as one element of the discussion that would happen around this horseshoe. The other was the heritage impact study. The other was the detailed design. There was another related to talking with the Public Arts Work Group. Another group was the Victoria Park Neighbourhood Association, and finally, the Victoria Park Working Group. So all of those things in the process were hijacked by responding with one element only. So shame on us. The rhetoric that went on in the community and around this horseshoe from time to time was also very unfortunate. There were some people who came forward with a significant project, which wasn't the city's project. We did not listen to the issues related to the educational aspect of this, and, or we didn't believe it, one or the other. This was a gift of $2 million to the community, to the city, and yes, there was a request for additional $300,000 to take care of the basis. I would remind you that we took a gift of $500,000 and named a sportsplex after the donor, active sportsplex. We've always got costs related to that ad infinitum, and forever, as long as we have that facility. This was $2 million, four times the amount. And so there would have been a process, if we'd have followed it, where we could have perhaps come to exactly the same conclusion as we will likely come to tonight, but at least we should have had the courtesy to follow through the process. Because there are people around this horseshoe that are constantly saying, "Well, we, we need to make sure that we've got all the information, and before we make a decision," and there are many sides to a story, so let's hear them all. We didn't do that. We certainly heard from a lot of the public, but that was one part of this process. It's too bad that we couldn't even have considered a deferral in order to allow that process to continue. The thanks that are given to the promoters and the supporters of this project in the last, the first resolution here, has to say thanks to them, is very disingenuous, because it's like a thanks but no thanks, and I hope that they find another location to do this project, because I think the project is good. Some disagree with that, and that is their right to do so, but I think we failed the process, and as I said before, we probably could have come to the same conclusion, and it would be no. But we didn't follow our own process, this council's process, that we asked staff to follow. So on a point of principle, I cannot support this resolution. I'm sure you'll want a recorded vote. Those in favour? And opposed? The motion carries. Now move on to the tenders. Now, you can, councillor, you can choose to talk a lot, or we're going to, and go beyond 11 o'clock, we need an unanimous motion in a few minutes to go beyond 11, or we can get through this in the next 18 minutes. So I'm prepared to move the tenders. Councillor Etherington, councillor Galloway-Seelock. Any questions? Councillor Fernandez. On, let's walk through them again. This is the firefighter bunker gear. Any questions on that?
I'll take myself off until I have the question.
Water Street. So, questions? Okay, councillor Fernandez.
Yeah, just to help me understand that we have a deficit from previous phases, and I guess I wanted to know when that work was done.
Who can answer that? Who, who just, Mr. Gordon.
I don't have that answer, but I will get that answer for you.
Mr. Chapman May.
That would be from the design phase, so that phase immediately preceded this construction phase is coming forward, so that would be fairly recent in time.
Okay, that's all I need. Thank you.
Cooling Tower. Sports lighting. Peter Holman, Fallier. Councillor Fernandez.
Yes, I just, I know we've had a few issues and concerns at Woodside Park, and there isn't any residents necessarily really close to this park, but I wondered if this new lighting that we're suggesting is, is going to have less of that ambient, I mean, you can see the Peter Holman lighting now from pretty far away. Will this new lighting be a little bit lower level or more onto the field?
Who has that? Miss Tewson.
My understanding is that the lighting will be very similar to what we've had before. We will be lighting an extra field beyond one that we, we didn't light in the past. It will be more efficient in terms of energy use, but in terms of where it's going to cast its light, I think it's very similar to before.
Okay. The field, the additional field that's going to be lit, will that be, I'm terrible with directions, but let's just say, will it be closer to the high school, or will it, because, or will it be closer to Cortland?
I don't know for sure which one is not lit at this time. We can certainly find that out for you.
I think it's the, the one that would be closer to the school that will be lit, is not now lit.
Okay. All right, because, I mean, there's a, there's a good, there's a good tree canopy along Homer Watson, so that's why I'm not concerned about, about that side, but I was just wondering if there should be a concern. I guess because things have changed with Bloffline and Cortland, that there, you know, the apartment is now subjecting to a lot more light than it used to be, I was kind of hoping that this was not be, not be the case. So maybe if we could just have a clarification on where that is, in hopes that we are not going to end up with resident complaints on a, on a field that is now lit that wasn't lit before.
Filber Street Construction. Consultant Services, Dune South Sanitary Pumping Station. Councillor Galloway-Seelock.
Yeah, I just have one question with respect to this one, and it's on the third page, under the financial implications. With respect to development charges, there's $650,000 roughly rounding in there. Is that current development charges, or are those future development charges?
Mr. Chapman.
Through the chair, I've just confirmed that this project was budgeted over many years in the capital forecast, so those represent funds that were previously budgeted for this project. The balance of funds will be raised through the credit refund agreement.
Okay, can you say that again in a different way?
Those funds are already in the account. They were provided for in a previous budget, so they are there. The balance of funds which are required will be raised through the credit refund agreement with Monarch.
So those development charges have come from that area already? Is that what you're saying?
They're citywide, but they've been raised through the sanitary portion of the development charge previously, yes. So we, council had allocated the budget over a number of years, and those funds were approved in a previous budget and are presently in the capital account.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Fernandez.
Thank you. I wanted to thank Mr. Chapman for clarifying something for me in terms of the development charges and what was going to happen. Again, a little bit concerned that we're, we've, we're advancing a $17 million project from 2019 to, and that's what I, that was my question. When exactly are we expecting this work to start?
Some advise that construction will start in the winter of this year, so later in 2014.
In the winter of this year?
Yes.
Okay. And understanding that there have been, there has been an EA done on this, I guess my other concern was, how, does anybody know when that EA was done? I believe it was through the OMB process. I stand corrected if I'm, if I'm not right.
Okay, perhaps engineering staff can help us answer those questions? Mr. Robinson or Mr. Spear? Okay?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The EA was completed in 2009.
Okay, so, I was wonder, I was worried that it, that it was edging on the, on the 10-year time limit for studies for species at risk and such, but it's not. Okay. I'm not, I'm not really a strong opponent, a strong advocate of moving forward on a tender of this, this value. I still have my doubts on how this is all going to roll out, especially because once this comes into our capital budget timeline, we will already be receiving a facility that will have aged, now, not by an awful lot, but it will have aged, so it will be like buying a brand-new car and then selling it, knowing that the warranty was already up, and that new owner was going to be taking on all of the repair costs or operational costs. So I'm a little bit concerned about this, and so at this time, I'm not going to support this. It's not to say that I think that, well, actually, we're just looking at the consulting services, but I, so I'm going to retract that. I will support the consulting services, but I have great concerns about advancing this project.
Okay. Senator in the Square, Consultant Services, the symphony. Councillor Vravenevich.
Question to Mr. Chapman. I'm not sure, why is there HST on here when it's with an American consulting company?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. This is being done in Canadian dollars, and, and the project is here and requires HST to be paid.
Really? Okay.
Yeah, it's where it's being consumed, so to speak. Councillor Fernandez?
Yeah.
On that same one?
Yes, it is. Thank you to Mr. Gordon for sending me the additional information and understanding that it's being paid in Canadian dollars. I still have some very serious concerns that we're using consulting services outside of Canada. I see that we do have two other companies that did quote. I understand that their costs may have been a little bit higher, and, and of course, I'm always trying to stay within budget, but I just have a concern about us doing cross-border consulting, so just on that principle.
Okay. And the roof rehabilitation. Seeing none? That's been moved and seconded for the tenders. Those in favour? Opposed? That's carried. The, move to the committee reports. Councillor Ainaitis, the balance of the report.
Is it moved?
Yep, there you go.
It is moved by myself and seconded by councillor Frank Etherington that the report of the community and instructions service committee be adopted, items one through item six.
We have dealt with five.
We have dealt with five, yes, that's correct. Minus item five, dealing with Kennedy sidewalk.
Councillor Fernandez.
I just wanted to ask that item six be pulled out and voted on separately.
We could do that. Okay. Okay. Items one through four then. Those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Item number six. Those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Financing Corporate Services. Counselor Davy?
Thank you. It's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Vrbanovic that the remaining items one through six, we've already dealt with number four, be approved.
Those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Planning and Strategic Services, Counselor Vrbanovic?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Kelly Galloway-Seelock. Item one was referred to this, this date, so I'll move the recommendation that's there, but I think, no, we'll, we'll leave it the way it is. And item number two is as is.
Okay. Those in favor? Opposed? Are we with it? Okay.
Sorry, I know we're, I know we're in a hurry, but we refer...
Well, we can, we can take a motion to go on, so I'm just...
I, I don't really want to, but...
Trying to get rid of it.
We had discussed the advertising policy and the website policy, wanting additional information with regards to, well, my, my concern was political advertising, and I'd like to see that removed from the policy, to not allow political advertising of any nature to be put into our, both our advertising and our website policy.
That, that would be an amendment to this, and that's quite all right. So, Mr. May? Or, okay, all right. So the, we'll deal with the amendment is to remove the political advertising. It's been moved by Counselor Galloway-Seelock, seconded by Counselor Davy, on that item only. Those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. The amended motions and number two then, those in favor? Opposed? It's been moved by Counselor Ionitis, seconded by Counselor Singh, that the bylaws be given first reading, but there is a late starter?
Just, just, just...
On?
Questions and answers?
I'm sorry, okay. So we'll just hang on to that, but before we go there, so we're not rushing around, I'd like to take a motion to extend the meeting beyond 11:00. Moved by Counselor Ionitis, seconded by Counselor Etherington. The unanimous approval. Those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Right. Now, questions? Counselor Glenn Graham?
Thank you, and this is very brief. It's to Mr. May. Noting the backlog of complaints regarding snow and ice, my question is, is there any way that we can bring to bear some more additional staff that would be unionized that could help out to blitz this problem on a one-off basis or as needed if a backlog reaches a certain threshold?
Sorry, Mr. May?
So through you, Mr. Chair. The first step that the bylaw enforcement staff have taken now is we're reassigning staff within the division to deal with the backlog, and we believe that by the end of this week, we'll have a good handle on things. Having said that, while this is unionized work, there may be opportunities in the future that staff are exploring to look at staff outside of the bylaw division who may be able to support in these heavy periods.
Excellent. Thank you very much. That's a great answer.
Okay. Counselor Fernandez?
Thank you. I just have an item of new business quickly, as well as I have a question. So, the new business is, it has come to my attention that possibly that my questions last week of Mr. Chris Spear regarding the Upper Blair Creek, sorry, Upper Blair Creek, the, the EA and the ten, the tender for the Blair Creek Bridge may have inferred that I was challenging his professional integrity, and I have spoken with Mr. Spear, and we've, I have been very clear that those questions were related to establishing his expertise with MTE and were in no way, shape, or form intended to challenge his professional integrity. So just wanted to make sure that that was very clear. And my question...
And I'll, I'll just comment on that quickly.
Okay.
And I had drawn the attention to the code of conduct and in that basis with that understanding at that time. I'm pleased that it's been clarified, and as far as I'm concerned, the book is closed.
Okay, thank you. A quick question. I understand that when staff comes from COF to the city of, to the City Hall, or reverse, conversely so, that of course they would be challenging, charging mileage back to, to us. Do we try to make sure that meetings that can be held, for example, if I've asked a staff member to meet with me at City, to meet with me, is it, it's prudent, in my opinion, for me to meet at the closest location that they work at? Do, how do we make sure that that is happening? Because my fear is that oftentimes that staff may be having a meeting in the morning with somebody or at a, at some kind of a committee, goes, goes back to the COF or goes back to City Hall, and then later in the day, does the same thing. So how do we make sure that that is not happening? And that wouldn't just be for COF staff, it would be for City Hall staff. So maybe it's more of a, a budgetary question or, or a guidance of how we deal with that.
Ms. Houston?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I can certainly speak to what the practice is based on the staff at, at COF and, and myself in particular as well. I know that many of the staff that do attend regularly meetings here and at the COF will try to arrange their day such that they minimize the travel involved, and in some cases will pick a workstation here for the remainder of the day to continue their work here if there's a meeting here, so that they don't have to go back to COF. So we do try to minimize that, and when we are arranging a, a meeting, we do try to pick a location that suits the majority of the attendees, and sometimes we conference in as well, so we, we look at all those options.
Okay, that's good to know. I just, I just, I know that the, one time I had a staff member and it was back and forth, back and forth, and I thought, oh, that's really not, not fair. So thank you for clarifying that for me.
Mr. Chapman, you want to add something to that?
And just to add to that, I think we see more opportunities in the future for things like web conferencing, and so we're presently exploring potential tools that we can implement. And moving to voice over IP on the phone system provides even more opportunity, so I think you'll see better use of technology on that front over time as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're in the question-answer period here. Counselor Singh?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you all might remember, as part of the, the budget process, when the question was raised for street resurfacing and the, the funding for the Margaret Bridge, we were told that street resurfacing will not happen this year, and it's the staff opinion that those, those monies could be diverted to the, the Margaret Bridge. So the question was raised at that point, if alternatives could be looked at so that we can still ensure that some research, some part, aspect of the resurfacing program still could possibly take place in the 2014 calendar year, especially with the, the type of winter we've had. I think some of the problems that were quite serious in the past are probably far worsened because of the temperatures we've had. So just to, to staff, have we gotten any further with, with the response to that question when it was raised as part of budget, or is this something that would be coming back to council at a later point?
Ms. Houston?
Through, through you, Mr. Mayor. My understanding is that we would bring that report back when we bring the next report on, on the Margaret Avenue Bridge, that they would come at the same time.
When would that be?
I don't know that timing offhand.
So that's, that's the, the problem I have then. We can't sit and wait. Obviously, we can't wait too far long. We have to be sensitive to a certain, certain, I guess, building season for the year so that if, if works can be done, they can still be incorporated as part of this calendar year work plan. So keeping that in mind, can staff separate those two, two questions as to a funding source or if monies could still be found from somewhere else to still incorporate the, the street resurfacing program and a report be brought sooner?
We can certainly separate those two things and bring it earlier if you wish.
I would like to see that. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Vrbanovic?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just want to bring up an, an issue that I've been working with staff on and ask a couple of questions, and it has to do with our use of the Kitchener-Wilmot Hydro lands on Graber Place as a, as a snow dump this, this year. And we've had to use it because our existing facilities in this difficult winter have been overflowing, and we haven't been able to do it on the, the lands that, that we already own. So staff made those arrangements. It's caused some concern in the neighborhood, both in terms of its presence and hours of operation. I want to thank staff for being responsive in that, in that regard and trying to address as much of it as we could. But I guess two questions I have, and just a brief comment. One question for Ms. Houston is, part of the residential concerns are, you know, if there are any issues that come out of this, whether it's, you know, damages to, you know, anything on their properties as a result of our actions, either from, from water or salt or whatever, what actions will we take to, to address those issues?
Sorry? Ms. Houston?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We will certainly respond to any concerns that do come up with respect to damage. I can say that staff are monitoring the site fairly carefully, and we're ensuring that the grading of, of the, the snow piles is, is such that melting will, will happen as expeditiously as it can. We have talked to the Ministry of Environment about any environmental concerns, and we're assured that, that should not be an issue at the site. This is a site that we're looking to develop a, a site plan for long-term use as a snow dump site in the future, and we will be looking at doing a public consultation at that point.
Well, then, that was going to be my, my second question was, there will be, if we are looking at more extensive use in the future, some sort of public process, and you just told me that, that that in fact is the case. And I guess my brief comment to Mr. Mayor, and again, I appreciate the efforts that staff have made to, to address resident concerns. I think the lesson though for us through this and through the other situation we were dealing with earlier this year in, in Victoria Park with the maintenance facility there, is that we really need to proactively work with neighborhoods before we make fundamental changes like that, as opposed to be reacting to them, because what it does do is it starts us in a, in a deficit position when it comes to building goodwill with the neighborhood to, to bring about change. So I guess if I could just ask that staff note that in the future, wherever in the city that happens, that we do it proactively with the neighborhood affected.
Okay, seeing no more. We'll now move on to the bylaws. So again, it's moved by Counselor Ionitis, seconded by Counselor Singh, that the bylaws be given first reading. Ms. Darling, you have a late-starter bylaw.
I do. There is one late-starter bylaw with reference to licensing street vendors.
Those in favor of the bylaws? Opposed? That's carried. And it's been moved by Counselor Fernandez. The council resolve itself into committee of the whole. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried.
Bylaws for second reading. Please.
I'll put you on.
Thank you. So the bylaws for second reading have been motioned by Counselor Galloway-Seelock. All in favor? Okay, and that's, that's moved. Thank you. The item number two, the uncollectible utility accounts write-off, do I have a mover? Counselor Davy? And all in favor? And that's moved. The second item is item number three, uncollectible miscellaneous receivable accounts write-off. Do I have a mover? Counselor Davy? And we have a question from Counselor Galloway-Seelock.
I'm okay to reference the number that's on the side of this, is that right? Yeah. Okay, so I'm looking, well, it's the last one on the sheet with respect to bylaw, and I, it's, it's for a substantial amount. Are you able to give us any detail on what that is for, or is that something that can come in an email tomorrow?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Chapman. I apologize. I was reading it myself.
Thank you. Through Madam Chair. My understanding is that this relates to property standards, charges that were not collected. Typically, our process is to add them to taxes before that could happen. In this case, the property was sold. In conversation with collection staff, they've changed their process such that it will be applied to taxes immediately if the funds are not collected by the due date, so it should reduce the, the likelihood that this would happen again.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Counselor Singh?
Yeah, speaking to that last point, Mr. Chapman, so that doesn't mean just because we're writing it off that efforts will not be made through third party to collect funds.
Through the Chair, that's correct. In all cases, these will be turned over to collections agencies, and there is a chance of recovery still.
Okay, perfect. Just wanted to confirm.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? No? And it was moved by Counselor Davy. All in favor? And that is moved. Item number four, the school pedestrian safety for Jean Stickle Public School. Questions? Counselor Galloway-Seelock? Are you moving it or are you asking questions?
I can move it, and I have a really quick comment.
Sure.
Okay. I know we're, we're in, trying to get this wrapped up, but I just want to move it and thank staff for moving very efficiently on this, as well as making sure that, what it states in the report, that we have that follow-up, especially in spring, in moving this crossing guard from one area to the next. I think we may see more concerns with that move come springtime, so as long as staff continue to monitor that, that would be perfect. But thank you for all the work that staff did in an efficient manner on this.
Okay, and are you moving it, Counselor Glenn Graham? Okay, you moved it, okay. All in favor? And that is carried. Number five, the committee of adjustment sign and fence variation submission numbers SG 2014-001, 105 King Street East. Counselor Ionitis will move that. All in favor? And that is carried. And sign fence variation submission SG 2014-001, dash, oops, I apologize, that's the same, that's the same one. Submission FN, this is a fence variation, 2014-001 on 3 Sandwell Court. That is moved by Counselor Ionitis. All in favor? And that is carried. And the last one is item number six, the dog designation animal appeal, as stated in the report. Do I need to read that? No? Okay. That's moved by Counselor Davy. All in favor? And that is carried. Is there any other additional items? No, there is not. Thank you. And, uh, committee rises and reports. Oh, sorry, I need to read the, "The proceedings and the recorded pecuniary interests and conflicts taken in the meeting of the committee of the whole held this date as attached hereto and forming part of these minutes are hereby adopted and confirmed." All in favor?
Seconded by?
Seconded by?
Counselor Ionitis. Those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. And it's been moved by Counselor Ionitis, seconded by Counselor Singh, that the bylaws be given third reading. Those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. And it's been moved by Counselor Etherington that we adjourn.